Okay, good morning. It's Thursday, March 3rd. We got a interesting open session. We'll have the first part of the Siegel study discussion and brief to us from the Siegel team in just a little bit, but as always, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and take a moment of silence and in solidarity with the Ukrainians' challenges, keep them in our thoughts and prayers. We're talking over a million refugees at this point, and now Lviv, where their border crossing is, is starting to get hit. So, let's just keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
And I guess I should have prefaced it that that's what I was going to be doing in my thoughts. So, it's just, it's been a tough week for the world right now. But, but let's move it into Carroll County and go with priority Carroll, Commissioner Frazier.
Well, I was not going to say anything about the groundbreaking up at Charles Carroll. I think Commissioner Wance is going to take that. We were all there for that. It was a good groundbreaking, finally coming about, long last. And we all, also, we're all there for the meeting with the city Westminster and their council and so forth. They shared some projects that they have upcoming, I think will benefit both the county and the city. And, you know, it's also good that we're working closely together with them and as we try to work with all our municipalities. I think it's just something that this, this board has really worked on and the last board as well, trying to work closely with the municipalities because whatever's good for them generally is good for the county. So, why shouldn't we work with them? And I'll just stop, leave it at that and move on.
Okay, Commissioner Wance.
Okay, good morning. It's been a while since we've been on this desk, so had the State of the County address and want to thank everybody that participated in that, very well received, and the rest of the day. It's always, it's always a good time to meet with the leadership Carroll class. There's some really bright young people that are part of that class, so I want to thank them for that, the chamber specifically for putting that together. Last one that I will do and a couple others. So, anyway, it was very good and I appreciate everything that went on that day. I had the opportunity to tour one of our businesses here in the county, and it's interesting to me because the owner of the business had an interesting statement that he said to me. He said, you know, we see all the, all the politicians come and use the big scissors and cut the ribbons, and then we never see them much after that. So, I was kind of glad that we re-engaged with FR conversions out at the air park, the business park. And I guess my message to everybody is, let's not forget the businesses after we have the elbow rubbing ceremonies because they're doing some amazing things. I took some staff out there and FR conversions, as you probably remember, started building handicapped accessible units to put into vans. And they do it from the ground up. The only thing they get is the chassis from where whatever, most, a lot of it's Chrysler. But they've now started to build ambulances and they're shipping ambulances all over the world. And it was, I'm, I'm telling you, my, my, I walked around that place with my mouth open the whole time as to what they are accomplishing right out here. And they, it's, they're, they're building everything there, from all of the units inside the ambulance to the light bars, to the sirens. It's all happening right out here. So, if you get a chance, they would love to have people tour their facility. And I encourage everyone to stay engaged with those businesses that come into our county and don't just forget about them after that first day of ribbon cutting because, you know, the biggest thing also is the employment opportunities out there. Man, they, they, they got some really good employees out there. So, it was very interesting. It was an eye-opening experience and I appreciate the folks at FR conversions for providing the opportunity for a nice tour out there. We're going to hear from Mike Fowler. It's all things legislative now. One thing I will say, we spent a little time, and I don't know if you were going to touch on this, the election board.
I didn't have it, but...
So, let me just briefly touch on that. As most of you know, there are a lot of lawsuits that could and have already affected the, the, the schedule for this election for this year. There's a lawsuit in Prince George's County. There's a lawsuit in Baltimore County. There are four lawsuits in the, through the General Assembly and the Court of Appeals. There are three congressional lawsuits. I guess that's the way of the world now. When somebody gets angry, let's go find Dewey, Cheatham, and Howe, that great lawyer firm. That's what everybody does. I've seen it occur here in local government. You know, well, you don't, I don't like that, so I'm going to get a lawyer. Let me get off that soapbox, but that's just absurd to me. But anyway, all of these are taking place. It's already registering as a candidate has been pushed back to March the 22nd. And now there is a rumor that possibly it could push the election into August. And we'll see, the primary. So, we'll see what happens. That's just a rumor right now. But there are a lot of things going on when it comes to elections. We had a briefing by Linda Lamont, Linda Lamone, who is the state administrator for the Maryland State Board of Elections. And what resonated with me after she got done her report to all of us on the Mako call yesterday was, you might want to give your local election board folks a hug when you see them because they truly need it. They're, they're going through some tough times. So, we'll see where that goes. I only brought that up just to advise people that it looks like it's going to be a very interesting election season, not only because of the things that will occur as a result of typical elections, but because of the delay now with all the lawsuits. So...
I should warn you, if you give an election board member a hug, they may run to a lawyer.
It's a good point. Valid point.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, nothing against attorneys because, you know, God bless them because, man, they got plenty of business these days because I think if you look at somebody the wrong way, they might get an attorney.
Or a doctor.
That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Weaver.
Okay, just a little bit to piggyback on Commissioner Wance. You know, the State of the County, if you heard one thing in the State of the County, we're in good shape in this county. We really are unique. And you look at the issues, whether it's the state suing somebody or whatever, Carroll County, I guess, I think things are doing very well. And I look at things, is it better than when we took office? Have we made a difference? And I think if you look at that, I think we've made a positive difference in the county. I don't see it, it didn't go the other way. So, that is a positive here in Carroll. I firmly believe that. I just left the ag breakfast here at Balkers this morning, and, man, it was really refreshing to be out with a group out here that just wanted to know exactly what's going on in the county, asking questions. It was kind of a mini State of the County at that point. And I want to just reiterate that Charles Carroll groundbreaking was a fantastic event.
I'm coming back to that. I'm coming back to that.
Okay, okay.
We're going to circle the wagons back.
Okay, anyway.
That wagon.
That wagon?
You're kind of stoked.
Anyway, I was going to say Commissioner Wance did a good job, but forget it.
Don't know if I'm exaggerating.
The North Carroll and Charles Carroll both have been, I think, now on their way to doing something productive for the community. Even though it's taken years, we finally got through that. And the other last thing I want to say, the meeting with the city of Westminster, very positive. And communication, no matter what we do, I think is the key. We've met with the town and mountain area as a group. We've met with Westminster. All of a sudden, we start working together to solve issues or any problems. That is extremely important for the Board of County Commissioners. And this communication and keeping it open, whether it's us individually, whether it's meeting with municipalities, or whether meeting with just our friends and neighbors out here, citizens, communication is extremely important. And I think, here again, as a board, we're doing things I'm not sure happens in all counties. So, I'm done.
I appreciate that. And it does segue back into Commissioner Wance for a minute. Really appreciate the selflessness, persistence, perseverance of both Commissioner Weaver and Commissioner Wance, colleagues that have focused attention on the community. And I'll continue to say, I just don't understand the word constituents when we're a board of commissioners. We're talking about neighbors, friends, family, and community. So, that's how I feel and will always feel. And their dedication to North Carroll High School and to Charles Carroll Community Center is about community. So, Steve, I really appreciate your efforts, but it was highlighted yesterday, so...
Well, I appreciate that, Ed. And yeah, I got, I got on a high horse with the redistricting maps and lawsuits, but I want to thank everybody. My, 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 my theme here, and similar to what you said, Ed, has been people before politics. And I said that when I ran for this office. And I continue that as well. So, the Charles Carroll situation, I mean, the, the three schools in general were, were hard for us.
Yeah.
The three of us remember those difficult times that we didn't sleep for, you know, quite a few nights. And I will, before I touch on this, I want to congratulate you as well, Commissioner Weaver, as Ed said, because you've, you've seen the hard times up there. And I think we're going to have a great community venue now on that side of the county, which is, which is wonderful. And New Windsor's being leased. And then finally, this situation where the school was completely torn down and left a hole up there in the community, pun intended. So, through hard work and not just by me, but by staff, from budget to DPW to, to, I mean, everybody. I mean, we, we had, we had a little battle with SHA for a while, as you remember, and, and we came out on that side of it really well. But I'm excited to say that this, this is project will begin very shortly now. And that community will have something that they can call home. And there was a lot of pushback. Well, not a lot, but there was a good deal of pushback from a lot of different people. But I'm not going to get on that. I just, I, it just, that's what occurs. But we, we worked our way through it. And we're going to have a great 13,000 square foot building up there for not only that community, but as you say, Ed, it'll serve the county and surrounding areas because the full-size gymnasium and the meeting rooms will provide the opportunity for everyone beyond Silver Running Uni-Mills to take advantage of a nice meeting place and recreational venue. And I'm sure they'll come from all parts of the county. So, again, I want to thank everybody. There's Derek Ludlow, who was our community liaison. So, did anybody get dirt on their shoes at the...
Just, just, you know, a sprinkling.
Is that all okay? Because that's usually a thing.
I splashed.
You did?
I don't understand.
Okay, okay. So, to my colleagues, thank you as well. I truly appreciate your assistance. And there were some hard decisions, and I appreciate it. I appreciate all you guys as well. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Boucher.
Thank you. Commissioner Wance, I appreciate you mentioning the manufacturing base and business community in this county because, on average, employees in manufacturing make more money than people in retail and other sectors. So, highlighting the importance of manufacturing locally is really important. I did a tour out there at Winfield. Staff there showed me the pumping system for the wastewater management system they'll be replacing. It's always nice to go out and see what they're up to. It's a constant, continuous process to maintain all this equipment. There are so many things and infrastructure that go on that we don't see. And these individuals stay active 24/7, making sure that all those needs of water and sewer are provided for us. So, thank you very much. What else do we have? Oh, then by chance, I went out and did the tour of the Winfield Salt Dome the evening of the ice storm that was coming. So, I had a big crew there to give me a tour of everything. I did not realize that the trailers there have bunk bed systems for the drivers that they're on 24 hours or 48 hours. And I think there's a regulation with State Highway Administration, every so many hours they can't drive. So, we have very nice facilities for them, for their safety and well-being. And what a wonderful crew. So many of us can cuddle up on our couch and watch TV during the snowstorm. And these individuals that work for the county are out there for 24 hours straight. Here's a, a view of the new salt dome we have. This is also up on our roof. We're refurbishing the roof structure. They redid all the metalwork, the new paneling. They're redoing the roof. And this is our crew up there, Deputy Director Green. A lot of credit goes to these individuals who go out and look at these things that most of us have no idea what's going on. And if we don't maintain this, then there's a much larger long-term cost to us. So, thanks to all those individuals who have been working on refurbishing this building and making sure it lasts a long time. And finally, I believe this, we have South Carroll once again is doing tremendous work in athletics and track and field. Thanks to their athletic director, Timothy Novotny. I received some information. We have here a list of themes. The women's four times 401A state championships. These are our first-place winners, Lauren Chesney, Madeline Boyce, Brooklyn Pry Bulick, Ella Boyce. And then we have in the Williams 501A state championships, Madeline Boyce. Men's pole vault 1A state championship, Peyton Thomas. Men's shot put 1A state championships, Nathaniel Fields. And a lot of credit goes out to their coaching staff. I like to list them. That's Caitlin Weinhold, Joe Murray, Zachary Brown, Vicky Pellicati. I'm sorry if I'm slaughtering the name, but a special thanks to all those coaches. Because without a good coaching staff, as Commissioner Frazier well knows, we will not have these young champions out there. So, thank you for representing Carroll County. I think that'll be it. So, thank you.
Okay, as I shared earlier, you know, we have a very big world out there, but a small community. And just keep Ukraine in our thoughts. Blue and gold, but just more than that, understanding, you know, the impact that it's going to have because it ain't over. And it's going to be a long time before it is over. So, that's honestly what's front on my mind. What was shared was the State of the County. The focus I appreciate was on our community, was on safety, security, quality of life for Carroll County. And nobody knows Carroll County better than Carroll Countyans. Our role as commissioners in participating within the commissions and councils is second to none across the state. And it makes those commissions and councils the best there are. From the Veterans Advisory Council, which has been recognized, to the Ag Council or Commission, to all of them, aging disabilities, we take care of Carroll County because of our impact that we have from, from our board in participation, understanding, because we don't do it all up here and we can't expect to do it all. So, having the eyes and ears out there and then participating, you know, is really been a valuable opportunity for all of us. We had a joint Board of Education meeting recently, lasted about an hour and 40 minutes. So, a little bit less time than their, their typical meetings, but that's okay. We got a lot covered in that joint meeting. And a lot of discussion and crosstalk between CCPS, Board of Education, and us as the Board of County Commissioners on working a path forward. It's definitely going to be challenging times as we're going to be walking ourselves into the budget season in just the next couple of weeks, where we'll really be eyes down in figuring out how best to resource the needs of our, our children and our school system. So, that is, I think, high on everybody's agenda. The last thing I do want to share again, it's important for outreach and the developers that have identified, that have purchased, I guess, the properties down in South Carroll, both in two very large residential properties, the Beatty property and Isabel property, have been invited. And look forward to engaging with the community during my town hall on Wednesday. Typically, as typical, I have town hall meetings, one in the morning, one in the evening, to do the best I can in getting outreach to the community because, you know, one time suits people better than another time. But I do have both developers coming to those town halls to answer your questions. And I'll also have, as always, key staff there in attendance, along with our Sheriff's Department, to answer your questions as well. But I do look forward to, you know, the developers', you know, outreach. And I applaud them for wanting to do that because there's going to be some tough questions, I would expect. But if you got it, I'll tell you, it ain't the place, social media is not the place to do it. It's outreach to us. You know, if I see something on social media, I typically say, here's my email, reach out, and let me help answer that question. As opposed to the circling of social media comments, which a word from Commissioner Wance's vocabulary is absurd and does us absolutely no good. So, but what does us good is our liaison, legislative liaison, Mr. Mike Fowler. So, without further ado, Mike, why don't you share with us what is happening in the wonderful town of Annapolis?
Yes. Welcome morning. Morning.
Morning.
So, 40 days remaining, a little over a month, halfway there, a little more than halfway there. The big date, I think, is March 31st, crossover date. So, a lot of work to be done this month. Yesterday, Commissioner Wance and Commissioner Frazier were on the Mako call, which discussed the issues around the election. And the only thing I'll add to that is, I thought I heard that the General Assembly leadership is generally opposed at this point to moving the primaries. So, an awful lot of moving parts on this. Question remains whether they are forced to do that or not, so...
God feel sorry for the local boards of elections that don't get moved.
Yeah.
They're under a lot of stress.
I think they've moved forward based on the maps that have been proposed. And, you know, they have to do something, right?
The court's the law guard.
Yeah. And so many suits, it's, as you say, absurd. So, I thought I'd share with you, basically, I thought that the Mako folks did a good job yesterday in kind of talking a little bit about the major bills that are still in place. So, I thought I'd kind of use that as a template and just run through those for you. So, a big-ticket item is the Legionnaires' Disease Prevention Act, the one where you would be required to sort of test and remediate just about every building there is, based on the fact that many of them were vacant or underutilized during the pandemic. So, that bill stalled right now in the committees because the ticket is, the fiscal note is very, very large. And I'll just say, generally speaking, from a fiscal perspective, the, the budget surplus is in most, for, for most of the budget surplus, it's one-time money. So, they are going to take a holistic look because, as you imagine, when you're, it's an election year combined with the fact that there is a surplus, a lot of bills have been put in to increase state funding. And so, they'll be looking at those bills, at the large bills anyway, holistically, to make sure that it's sustainable going forward. One, one good news was Senate Bill 40. So, now systemic renovations are not considered eligible costs, so they don't get state, the state funding contribution. This bill would say that if the costs are greater than 100,000, they would be considered eligible costs and eligible for the 11.5% contribution by the state. So, that's in House appropriations right now. The Family Medical Leave Act, again, another big-ticket item. The Family Medical Leave Act, again, another big-ticket item. The private sector is really pushing back hard on this apparently. And so, there's a lot of discussions going on there. The bill may be scaled back, it may be implemented in a delayed fashion. So, we're keeping our eyes on that one. Our Mako bill to codify the 50-50 split in state and Board of Elections funding is out of the Senate Committee. It's simplified, it just basically does codify that split. But it's now tied up with these larger election issues about how many polling places a county must maintain. Can they be reduced? So, those things are still up in the air. And again, the whole issue about do we move the primary, what are the maps gonna look like? So, anything election-related is sort of in limbo right now. Another important bill that, for a number of years now, the folks in your land use area have concerns about ag land and ag assessment and agitourism. So, Senate Bill 567 would say that for accessory uses on ag property, they would be assessed at the ag property tax rate. So, there's a lot of concern with locals about, you think about large, really non-ag-related uses, like large wedding venues. You think about, we've talked about this before, for example, the breweries where you have, may have a farm brewery, but you may have a farm that has a brewery or a tasting room. And is that, are they really using the products of the farm on that operation? So, I think that you might remember, Commissioners, that Jan Gardner from Frederick County was pretty vocal on this. That they have a lot of folks that they believe are coming in to buy these ag properties with the express purpose of doing this and no intent on maintaining any agriculture on there. So, that's another big hit to the county purses. So, that's being pushed back on pretty strongly. We've talked about the Body Cam bills, there are three of them in play. One is Senate Bill 31, which establishes a criteria for public information requests that will sort of tamp down on fishing expeditions. So, it's very prescriptive in what you can refuse to release. So, it has to be really focused on an incident or protection of a witness, that sort of thing. So, that passed on the Senate, out of the Senate Committee, it was on the floor yesterday, I'm not sure how that vote went. But I'll certainly follow up. The other two are, well, I should say, there are two more. One is an omnibus bill, which includes the issue of having the state pay for the cost of the cameras. The other is a bill in the House that is focused solely on sharing the costs or having this, excuse me, not sharing, but having the state pay for the entire package. Senator Cidner's bill, Senate Bill 558, that's the one that creates a central repository for all the camera data and then allows the counties to go in, access that data for redaction, review, and all the legal purposes. I think the one important point is that the General Assembly understands something has to be done about the costs. So, I suspect you will see something come out of there that addresses that. And as you've stated and your colleagues in the other counties have stated, it's the ongoing costs that are really the big part of the package here. House Bill 668, related to the removal of health officers. That's the one that defines the delegation role in it. That was put forward by a Hartford County delegate and that's probably not likely to move at all. But the other bill, Senate Bill 548, is the one that sort of defines the conditions under which a county can remove their health officer. So, it's very prescriptive there. But something is likely to pass in that. I think you saw some media reports about the Hartford County health officer that was let go and had some strong words in the bill hearing for that. House Bill 761 is the bill that Delegate Krebs put forward that would require a county to, as the Board of Health, to establish conditions under which the health officer and his staff can issue stop orders, for example. The hearing was pretty long, actually, and there was actually a lot of sympathy on the committee for the intent of the bill, which was to give, primarily to give people an avenue to appeal or to understand why that order was given. Right now, their only recourse right now is through the courts. So, there was a lot of sympathy, but it was also a lawyer from the University of Maryland School of Law that had some legal questions. She believed that it was not in a shape that would actually do what the bill intended to do.
Does this bill look fairly hopeful or do you have a feel for it?
Is it?
Is it, like, what's the chance, is this move, are you getting a feel for it so far?
There's a meeting Friday with all of the stakeholders in the bill to talk through it. Mako is gonna be in that conversation.
Have they held a position on this yet or to be determined?
Yeah, the Mako position was opposed. But I think that they want to be at the table because this may get somehow moved into the other bills about health officers. So, this whole thing about dismissal and whether, and it's complicated because of the role of the state and the role of the county in the health officer positions. So, I have a feeling that something may come out of it. But it's, there are just too many legal questions right now that I heard posed in the hearing.
All right, I appreciate that.
The gist of the bill is to give the community an opportunity, when questioned on, you know, their process, when something doesn't go right, instead of going through a legal, very lengthy process, to make it as low level as possible to determine whether it's appropriate or not. The challenge is, if it's us, do we have the ability, you know, sitting up here to justify its legality or its, you know? But we do have resources that we can reach out to, whether it be our legal support or, you know, precedence from other opportunities. I've said it once, I've said it a lot of times, I want to be governed at the lowest level possible. And although this is State Department agencies, if we can govern something at the lowest level and make decisions, then we should have that ability to do that. There's still a lot of answers, you know, to questions that haven't been asked. But I do support this, like I support a lot of other things, you know, in its, in its meaning.
The intent, right?
Yeah, in its intent. I don't know if I support it.
In its form.
Right. So, yeah, I appreciate filling in the blanks because whatever we can do at the lowest level. So, I mean, if it's gonna help, you know, us get there, you know, and there's a question about supporting it, you know, I would like to have that conversation amongst us. Because I'm for doing that, but I'm not gonna blanket saying, I support this, you know, blindly because I don't know what that's gonna put us in as far as a bind.
I think ultimately it may give the inspectors to be a little more accountable for what they do and follow the regulations 100%. You know, whether it's a church group selling baked goods at a table or Boy Scouts getting shut down for selling lemonade, that's been a few years. But it gives them an appeal process somehow in here to come back and say, why did you do this to us? And it makes the, I think, health inspector explain what circumstances were leading up to it, good, bad, or indifferent. I do agree that the intent is good. I'm not sure kind of the stake gets done with it or come out looking anything like it was intended to be.
Yeah, I think your point is really, really well-taken. I think a lot of the anecdotes you hear are just that, that I don't know why I've been given this. Where in the law does it say this? You know, one of the supporting arguments has been, well, for example, when you get a traffic ticket, it tells you right on there what part of the Maryland code that you violated. And there's nothing like that that occurs at this point. So, again, I think that all the stakeholders are gonna get together with the hope of ironing something out to meet the intent and maybe it won't come in the form that the bill is currently.
Just one question, how do you know what's on the traffic ticket? Now, you don't have to answer.
Experience?
Lead the fifth.
So.
That's what I heard.
Would it help or do anything if we helped Delegate Krebs going into this conversation or no?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly have a discussion with her and kind of, you know, explain what your discussion has been.
I mean, is there any adverse issues on this in moving forward? I don't know.
I don't know.
Again, I don't, my challenge is I don't know what the process, I got the gist of it, you know, in reading it, but I'm just concerned that, I don't wanna say we're liable, but we would be liable for a decision made. Do we have that skill set or do we have the reach for that skill set to make that decision?
Yeah, and maybe the first part of the bill that sort of prescribes that you have to develop sort of the rules of the road for the health officer and their staff and how they interact with the public, right? Maybe it's as simple as you have to quote the regulation? I think that's what they're trying to get at, is give people something to help them understand why they've been called out on something. And then, of course, the appeal process is still up in the air. I mean, the bill says you will be the judges on that as the Board of Health. But again, the attorney from the School of Law said that you really don't have the authority to do that. So, those are the questions that are all up in the air and that's what Friday's discussion is supposed to work through. So, I mean, I can certainly talk to our Mako counterparts too and see what their perspective is going in.
Was this brought up at all yesterday?
No. Was it? No. No, and my stance on it, I would prefer to let Mako take the lead on this. Some of these decisions are well above my pay grade. And I would rather see what comes out of the meeting on Friday here.
Yeah, I think at this point, if, you know, all you have is the bill in front of you to weigh in on. And it doesn't sound like you're really totally in support of the bill.
Yeah, the ship sailed on how the bill was written.
Yeah, exactly. So, you don't really know what Friday's discussion is gonna bring forward. I think maybe let's wait to see what comes out of that at that point.
Because to do anything else would sort of go against what Mako has already said that they were doing, which is oppose the bill. So, if we as the county committee say, well, wait a minute now, we kinda like the thing, I don't know that that's the best.
But I think.
Stand to take at this point, I'd rather see what the results are of the Friday meeting.
That's fine, I think, well, I don't know. But for them to reconvene, to come back, is Mako going to look at how they can support this bill? Or are they looking at to support part of the bill? I mean, do you have any feel on that?
I have to, if I can. When Mako opposes the bill, usually because there's so much in the bill that they don't like. When they, usually their thing is support with amendments. Which means there's a core there that they really like, but there's these other things that they don't. But if we put these amendments in, it could really be good. So, when they oppose, there's usually a lot in here that goes against what Mako would normally back. So, I mean, with Commissioner Wance here, let's wait to see what the discussion is and see what comes out of that before we make any decision on our own. Because I do think there's some good, a good kernel in this bill. But the other stuff is like, I'm not even sure how, you know, if we have the authority to do it. And it's just too much up in the air, in my opinion.
Yeah, in the hearing for the bill, the Mako policy analyst suggested that the ability to appeal already existed in the counties. But when he was challenged, he couldn't really articulate that. So, I think the appeal is through the court system right now.
The other thing to think about too is, you guys know how our schedule is. You put in place an appeals process on the decisions that the Health Department is making, you're gonna have to add another day because everybody's gonna appeal it. I mean, if it's gonna make it easier to appeal these decisions, well, just like I said earlier this morning, everybody's gonna wanna do it, everybody wants to get an attorney.
But it could be as simple as the person who creates the violation has to spell out where it is in the ordinance and explain it to the people if they cite them. That solves a lot of issues right there, but apparently that isn't happening at the present time.
Well, I've made that happen quite a few times in seven years.
And they don't have any basis in that, obviously.
Right, but when you check them on it, we really get into it, then they're like, yeah, well, wait a minute, we could. So, there kinda is a process if you wanna do it. So, I just don't know of getting it to this level of where, you know, the local commissions or councils or however it works sit as the Board of Health and then we hear appeals processes. I'm not sure that that's what we're looking to do here, I don't know. May not solve the issue.
And to your point about Mako, this is the mandate, right? So, Mako generally opposes mandates and would prefer the flexibility at the local level, to your point.
Right.
All right, did we beat that horse sufficiently?
Well, I look forward to getting the feedback, if you can provide after Friday.
Right.
Yeah, I'll feed back to you all and then if we need to reconvene the discussion, we can do this. So, two environmental bills, so the PFAS bill, good news on that. The state will now purchase any stock that fire departments have of their firefighting foam that contains the chemical, the PFAS chemicals. So, that's a good thing. That was a big concern, the fire departments would be disposing of that. So, MDE would be responsible for the purchase and the destruction of the material. And I think you heard Mr. Robinson express some concerns about the bill, that their turnout gear that had this chemical was a problem. And that's been reduced now to if they sell that gear or if they transfer it in some way, they simply have to submit a notice that it contains the chemical in it. So, that was a win there. House Bill 633, so this is the issue that we spoke about a couple of weeks ago, the Accountability and Implementation Board membership. So, currently, the current law simply says that the folks from the rural counties, so Western Maryland, Eastern Shore, and Southern Maryland have to be considered for nomination. This bill would say they have to be members of the board. So, right now, the board is seven members, it would increase to 11 to include those three regions of the state and then a representative, I think, of five most populous school systems in the state. So, Delegate Rose had asked for support, mentioned to her that we, from a timing perspective, we could talk about that today, but the hearing is today. So, she asked if you could write individually, and I think several of you did that. We made clear that we would discuss the issue more formally and then come back with full board support, so.
And I think we did. I know at least three of us wrote individually on this to support her. I don't know, Commissioner Boucher or Frazier, if you did or not.
No, I, to be honest with you, I like the idea that you're telling somebody, even, I like the idea that they have to come from.
from different regions. I do like that. But say if you come from, you're automatically on the board. Don't like that idea.
So, just to make it clear, so that now you have to put forward a nominee, well, you don't, you have to consider them in the nomination. So, you have to consider people from those three regions in the nomination. But now, it would have to be someone from Western Maryland, so that's Allegheny, Garrett, Frederick and Carroll. Then the Eastern Shore counties are a block and then Southern Maryland is a block. So, there will be someone serving on the board from those geographic regions along with others that make up the board. So, that's what that is. So, someone from those regions.
I, I, I got you. Don't like it.
You don't like it?
I like the idea that it has to be considered for the board. I think we should be considering from all their geographical reasons because I think they're not represented right now, but to say someone from this region has to sit on the board. I thought that's the part I don't like.
If I may, Mr. Burke, doesn't the high judiciary in this state exercise something similar to that with the pointies in the Court of Appeals and the Court of Special Appeals? Don't they have regional representation?
Yes, that's correct.
So, there is an existing template for this concept inter judiciary.
Boy, you write letters supporting that.
Well, I'm not sure what that was, but.
Well, what I'm saying is, this does not have the norm for a concept. If it's applied in judiciary, then it would meet the legal sniff test, so to speak, if this got implemented.
I guess I'm not worried about legal sniff test. I'm worried about representation of Carroll County.
The potential for Carroll County.
That's right. Rep, yeah. Yes, on this commission. I mean, that's what it's about.
Yeah, the bottom line is before was the metro region only.
Right.
And it left out all the sides.
Right.
Now, we want to bring the sides in.
Yeah.
But what I'm getting at is I'm reinforcing that this is a positive and it would meet the judiciary requirement. I'm not against it. What I'm saying, I'm reinforcing this position.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with judiciary. It has to do with representation for the schools. I mean, for us to be.
I understand. I think you're missing my point.
Well, the one, the bill, I think there's, the bill that says that they have to be considered, that wasn't even out there before, correct?
It was, yes, they had, so, yes, they had to be considered, but if, so, in the nominations, they would be considered, but if no one were submitted, that was the problem, I think, that occurred this time, was no one from those regions submitted to be part of the board.
Well.
That's the excuse that the senators are using for the way that they chose the current board.
I mean, I don't know all the ins and outs.
Yeah.
I don't, but if no one was submitted.
I understand that point. I think, though, this will cause the region, which is the four counties, because Frederick's out of it, right?
For our region, right.
For our region, to select somebody to be represented on this board. And it'll expand it from seven to eleven.
Right.
Correct.
Which I think is a good thing.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, representation is a good thing.
Yes.
So, as opposed to getting overwhelmed by, like Steve said, the metro, you know, populations. So, like I said, I think individually we did letters, but if we can look at doing a letter from the Board of Commissioners in support of this adds value, right? And that's, I think, what's being asked. So, you know, if, do we need a motion or we just need an agreeance on this? I mean, does it matter? I say, you know, write a letter for the Board of Commissioners. They have all signatures.
What we just do yesterday, right?
Today.
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 Yeah, you can still get the letters in.
Yeah.
Well, I'm in support.
Yeah.
So, there's one.
All right. Good?
Two, three, four, five.
Got five. Keep going.
So, I'll basically submit the same language, just tweak a little bit.
Yep, thank you. Definitely understand your point, though.
Highway user revenues. So, Commissioner Wanser, you going to testify on the ninth and the tenth?
Well, yeah.
The House and Senate.
Well, the ninth is in person, so it's going to be interesting to be in the hollow chambers again.
Yes, yes. You'll have a lot of your colleagues with you.
I do that from here, but the ninth, I'm going to have to, road trip.
Yes, yes. And obviously, it's very critical. I passed a chart, I think I forwarded a chart to you that Mako put together that showed where you were in fiscal year 2007 and where you were in the latest fiscal year.
Hey, you want to know what that figure is?
And the cumulative loss over the years, a little over a hundred and fifty million to their calculation, so.
There it is, yep.
It's a lot of money.
2007, we were receiving fourteen point four mil and twenty-three, five million for a difference of nine point four. So, cumulative, it's a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and fifty-one.
And that five million is up from what it was before. That's, I think, we're at low, as low as two million at one point.
Yeah, because that was part of the deal last year where it sunsets or whatever.
Few seasons, a few sessions again, yes, and the sunset was after, after twenty-four.
So, my testimony is going to focus on Carroll and specifics, and I think that's what Mako's looking for. Not to throw a lot of rhetoric at them, but be specific and give them how it's affected Carroll. So, I'm going to hit that heavy. Mike and I are going to work together on that and then we need to get Castingway to throw a couple of things into the mix. He already has, but getting him in, yeah.
I mean, there are a lot of members of the General Assembly that were here in 2007, but most were not and really don't have a grasp on the impact that that has had over the years.
Yeah, Director of Castingway has had a lot of heartburn over that, so this would be a big benefit to him if we can get some more capital in.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, I would assume then that everyone is on board also with that one.
Yeah, anybody want to ride along?
Yeah, so, we'll write collectively.
It's always fun to have somebody ride along with, so, if I want to go, let me know.
Commissioner Weaver may attend with you.
Yep.
Good to talk about sprinklers.
The one thing I did want to mention quickly before I forget is the cannabis issue. So, the House did pass their referendum question bill, which basically says, are you in favor of recreational use for adults twenty-one or over? So, that's going to go over to the Senate now. Senate, and they also passed a bill that would decriminalize it, would provide for expungements of convictions, simple convictions, and would also define levels of possession that were legal and illegal and so forth. So, that was passed along with it, but nothing so far to the tax structure. That's all in the Senate bills. So, there's obviously a big difference of opinion between the Senate and the House, which is not unusual, particularly with these two new leaders. So, we'll have to see now what the Senate does with that issue. And also cybersecurity, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Mark Ripper participated in a press conference, a video conference yesterday on a package of cybersecurity bills that are really good. I think he had mentioned, at least mentioned to me that over the summer, he and his colleagues have participated in developing these bills and that they didn't quite come out the way everyone had agreed, but there's agreement now that they've been amended. And so, it's really about more coordination between the state and the local governments and also additional funding for the issue. So, it sounds like everybody's coming together on that.
I heard the hearing was hacked.
I'm sorry?
Defy nothing.
I said I heard the hearing was hacked.
If, I can add a little bit of anecdotal on that is the importance of the government, local and state and federal, along with academia and business communities coming together for best practices is crucial. And last week, I attended a very good panel discussion on cybersecurity with either, I think it was four on the panel, from the private sector. And three, and one of them came from the agency, maybe two, and then into private sector. When asked the question, what keeps them up at night, you know, besides the indigestion, all that kind of stuff, it was local community. It was local government cybersecurity. And I was like, wow. I mean, these guys are national figureheads and, you know, they have very strong business, you know, community ties and into federal government. And that's what they said, was local county cybersecurity practices. So, I did reach out to Mark to share that with him. You know, obviously, the weakest link is the individual, you know, in practice, but to continue to focus our attention and, you know, one of the catalysts is what's going on overseas right now. But I just felt that was worth sharing because that was a pretty, it woke me up from the panel because I was like, really? I was not expecting to hear that. And I think three out of the four said the exact same thing, so.
Yeah, I think people are in a good place now. In the previous session, at very least, it seemed to be a top-down approach. The state wanted to be in control and mandate all the way down to what kind of training programs local governments could use. But this now seems to be a much more collaborative effort and an understanding that there are individual roles to play. So, I think people are, I think it was described as not everything they want, but very good.
And there's an article in the Washington Post today with regard to that, I don't know who, yeah, I don't know who's doing. An article in the Washington Post today with regard to that press conference or was yesterday. And Mr. Ripper is quoted in it, so I forwarded the link to you.
He's in the Sun's article as well.
Oh, okay, good.
Good.
I think that's all I have.
For discussion, we talked a lot about seven sixty-one already and we're going to wait for Friday outcome. The compensation benefits, not much more of discussion. It's through the Senate or the subcommittee.
It's in the Senate Committee and House hearings not scheduled yet.
We received a letter from the Senator, you know, reading, you know, and we've had conversations. I am very confident that all of these bills have been discussed by all of us in open session, whether they've been discussed to the depth or length that some would want, that's regardless. They've been all brought up to our attention and highlighted on our intent in moving forward with these. I got the gist firstly from that letter. The parochial piece I kind of put to the side, but that's okay, but I did get the gist. And the gist is, hey, let's continue like Commissioner Weaver says, strong communications, you know, whether we like it or not. Don't know where this is going to end up, you know, as a result. That's regardless. It's going to be in their hands. But we're just going to continue to let them know how we feel about it and that's it. And that's what we did. So, there is no House committee scheduled right now.
Correct.
I believe. Don't know if we're going to have any, if we're not going to have impact on the Senate hearing, we're not going to have impact on the House, so, you know, it's, that's kind of where we're at with that specific bill. But, yeah, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there because I've had the conversations with them, you know, most of them, so, them being the legislation. Okay, anything else? Remakes, really appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Power.
Thanks. Okay, now, we're going to get into the Siegel discussion. Let's see where this is going to take us. Ted, are you going to come up and we're going to talk about the Siegel discussion and then we're going to have the Siegel representatives talk from virtually? We have the presentation in front of us and I'm sure it'll also be shared on the screens, but Ted?
Before I dive into this, just touch on two things that Mike said. You know, he made a comment about the state surplus being largely one-time. I just want to say, you know, just kind of by definition, it's all one-time. And I think it's an important point to make because there's a lot of people who want to do things that are ongoing, both in terms of new spending or reducing revenue, and it just doesn't work. And then the other thing was he mentioned that the state might pay for cameras, for the body cameras. That'd be a good thing if that happens, but just a reminder that our big costs here are about people, not about the cameras. Okay, so, the Siegel report. In just a few minutes, you're going to be hearing from Siegel, getting their assessment of Carroll's organization and workforce. And I want to remind you that when we took this effort on, we knew that we were doing it on a tight timeline. Choices had to be made on how to spend the available time and resources. And as you listen to the report, it's possible at some point, one of you is going to say, why didn't we look at, fill in the blank? And the answer to that question will almost certainly be because there wasn't enough time to look at everything we wanted to and we had to make choices as we made our way along. I also want you to understand, we didn't simply hand this off to Siegel. We've been very involved in this effort, providing information, context, clarification, supplemental work to the things that they are doing, and that continues now. Now, it's still months away, but there is a second part of this, a second report that will be coming to you on the compensation and position classifications. Now, these are separate reports, but they're not independent of each other. You know, each report has its own focus, but how we compensate our employees and how we provide services are inherently bound together. When the time comes for action, for decisions, we will need to consider all of this. And I want to come at that a little different way too. You know, eventually, there will be recommendations to improve compensation. But I want to be clear, the goal of this was not to increase compensation. The goal is to assure we can attract and retain the employees we need to provide services. The goal here is really to protect our ability to provide services. Now, the reason we're talking about this at all is because the commissioners recognized the concerns. You know, we've talked a lot about the declining number of applicants, declining number of qualified applicants, the growing number of posted until filled positions, job offers being declined, our aging workforce and other growing difficulties. Now, we're being pulled along with big national trends, but our difficulties are more than that. We are losing competitive ground to others. So, you asked for a deeper look at these concerns and for potential solutions. Now, we didn't hire Siegel to identify our problems for us. We were pretty sure we knew what our problems were. What Siegel is doing for us is helping to better define those problems, help us understand the underlying issues and to help us identify potential paths to solutions or improvement. Now, Siegel will not be offering answers. It can be tempting to say, okay, just tell us what we should do. But they can't offer us answers because there are no answers. There are no easy answers, at least. What they will offer is their assessment of our opportunities to change and improve. They will offer recommendations on how to best focus our time and energy and funding as we make our choices. Now, they're going to talk about transformational change, cultural change. This is important and I really encourage you to pay particular attention to this part of what they're going to talk about. There are lots of small changes that we can make, but that's not where our focus should be. They're going to be looking at cultural change that can open paths for improvement. Again, I want to be clear, you know, we're going to be talking about some hard things, but this is not about us having failed. We didn't suddenly arrive where we are today. Where we are, who we are today, is the product of decades of organizational change and decisions that have been made and reacting to changing environment and circumstances. This is about us preparing to tackle our future and putting ourselves in a position to continue to succeed. Now, I said cultural change. Now, I said cul- cultural change, you know, that could be lots of things. I just want to hit on a couple ideas. One, and I think this is really important, historically, boards of commissioners have been largely content knowing that our pay was lagging behind our competitors. Uh, there are lots of reasons offered for that, but under it was basically, we're okay with it. Uh, I think my argument, and I think what you'll hear from Siegel, is we can't afford for that to be o- okay anymore. Those things I talked about now are in part, at least, the, the product of the way we've looked at this for years. We either need to change our approach to how we attract and retain employees, or we're gonna have to acknowledge that our ability to provide services will have to change. This isn't just about what is the pay scale, though. We're also gonna need to reconsider our pay practices and where they might not align with our needs. We're gonna talk about pay practices and talk about things like, how do we decide how much we offer somebody who's coming here with experience? How do we reward somebody who's taking a promotion within Carroll County? There are lots of pieces like that and how we approach those historically is also a piece of this, this picture we're looking at. Now, providing services just keeps becoming more and more complex every time. And, you know, some of the legislative things you're talking about, ev- every legislative session makes our lives more difficult in trying to figure out how do we do the things that we do. And the dangers of having knowledge and skills held by one person or just a small number of people i- i- is growing. You know, thirty years ago, you know, maybe it was, it was okay, but I think now we, we have to be very concerned about this. And the need for collaboration is growing as well. We can't afford organization silos. And again, thirty years ago, maybe it was okay, you know, this group of people was doing this and this group of people was doing this. The way things work now, we just can't afford to have people operating separately. We, we need to promote a much more universal idea of how does this work for the county, not just how does it work for this piece of the job. Now, in the report, human resources and IT get a lot of attention. Uh, I think this is gonna be an important part of the discussion. I just want to say neither of those pieces of the organization exists in a vacuum. They're part of the same culture and the same history and the same evolution a- as we're, we're talking about here. And the concerns and opportunities in those areas are just a piece of these larger opportunities and concerns. I'm encouraging you, listen for the big ideas, listen for the opportunities for us to change our path. Now, in saying that, I'm not suggesting that we ignore any questions you might have along the way, things that you do want to talk about. We, we need to address whatever is on your mind that will get you comfortable with how we continue on from here. I, I just want to say, you know, try not to make about the little stuff, try and keep on the big stuff. Uh, Siegel is gonna follow me now to talk about their work and findings. Next week, some of us will back to you to talk about what came out of that discussion and to begin talking about where do we go from here. Now, remember, Siegel's work will not be done until the end of June. So we're bringing you a piece of it now, but there's still more to come and again, we're months away from wrapping that all up. Now, there might be some pieces of implementa- implementation that we can start acting on in, in the short term. Uh, a lot of this will have to wait until we're actually into fiscal year twenty-three. And one of the things we're gonna have to do in the budget process is coming is identify a pot of money that's gonna be in the FY twenty-three budget, even though we don't know yet what the decisions are to, to use it. But if, if we don't do that, we're gonna get to FY twenty-three, we're gonna get to the point of saying, okay, what are we gonna do? But we won't have any resources available to actually act on those ideas. Uh, I expect as we go through the budget process, um, this is gonna be a frequent topic of conversation, it's gonna be tied to many other things that we're thinking about. Now, okay, I see on our monitor that we do have our Siegel representatives. You can see, you can see their names, too, so I'm not gonna introduce them formally, but we've spent enough time with them that, you know, I would just think of them as Rebecca Jennifer and, and Scott. Uh, we probably know more about each other in some ways than we would have expected when we, we, we started all this.
Ted, if I can, I'll, I'll go ahead, I apologize, keep going.
I was just gonna say, including that, uh, at least some of them live in Buffalo and we got to see some snow through windows.
Yes, and fireplaces.
Yes.
Very nice fireplace. Um, but, uh, I'd just like to share, and again, this is the second time I'm, which kind of bothers me, that I'm quoting Commissioner Wance, but, you know, when it, when it fits, it fits and transparency is huge. We're doing this openly, you know, to our viewers and to our community. Um, it ain't about the emperor, doesn't have a clothes. It's about the emperor and look at the clothes that we do have and how things need to be adjusted to be effective and efficient moving forward. This ain't done behind closed doors, just like our budget, you know, isn't done. This is huge and this is a huge step to me, reaching out to the community. So what I'm asking is that the community and others, especially on this social media garbage, don't jump to conclusions as this is not conclusive. This is navigating us to the next steps. And, uh, that's my biggest concern when people look at slide decks like this, they say, oh, something's broke or this is minimized. This is not conclusive and we got a lot of work to do. Uh, so I really appreciate the team that's about to talk to us and I really appreciate our approach in being transparent, said twice now, to the community, okay? Um, and, uh, that, that's huge, so.
And I think that's an important point. We're, we're taking a hard look at ourselves here and, and some of it's uncomfortable. You know, it's, it'd be easy to say, well, why don't we just look away from that? But, but I, I think it's important that we do take this look and we very consciously take it in our hands to say, how do we feel about this? And if we don't like it, what do we want to do about it?
I'll say, I think this will probably be the most important legacy item that this board does before we leave. And I sincerely appreciate your presentation. I think that was one of the best presentations and most important long-term presentations you've ever given us. Thanks for setting us up.
Okay, what's the next step, Ted?
Our, our Siegel representatives to talk to you.
So, appreciate, uh, good morning to all. Um, and, uh, it's fifty degrees out here, I don't know what it's in Buffalo, but it's regardless because we're all indoors, so whoever wants to kick it off, please, and thank you up front.
Good morning. I'll, I'll kick this off, I'm one of the folks in Buffalo, it's, uh, twenty degrees and, uh, I think it's dropping down to ten at some point this evening. So, uh, we're, we're yearning for, uh, for, for spring, uh, hopefully around the corner somewhere soon. Good morning, commissioners, and, and, and thank you for allowing us to, to appear before you. We're honored to be here today and, um, thank you, Ted, for, uh, for the preamble and the good comments. Um, I think your, your comments, uh, frame the, the, both the project and the work and the outcomes, uh, really, really well. And, and so, one of the things that, uh, let me just, by way, by way of introduction, let me introduce the team. Um, I'm Scott Nastia, uh, I'm the National Practice Leader at Siegel of what we refer to as an organizational effectiveness practice. Uh, we're the organization, uh, within Siegel that works with county governments, with public and private entities, on a whole host of organizational and operational issues, exactly what you engaged us, uh, to do here. Uh, I'm joined by my colleague Jennifer Donnelly, also a Senior Vice President, uh, within our firm. Uh, she is a, a noted and national expert in issues relative to change management and organizational, uh, efficiency. Uh, and then Rebecca Robb is an expert within our firm on data analytics and, uh, and a whole host of other, uh, activities where she was a vital role, a member of, of the team here. We have a couple other members that participated in the, um, in the, uh, in the work, uh, that aren't joining us today, but, uh, uh, we'll make mention of them along the way. Um, so we're going to, uh, walk you through a presentation, I'll just make a couple comments be- before we start. Um, I think Ted, your, your comment is, is, is spot on. When we started the work, um, we, we knew that we were entering into an era of, um, incredible change, uh, not only for the county government. And Commissioner Boucher, your comment is, is right, because I, I suspect this will be one of the most important legacy things up in front of you. Uh, it needs to be, um, a- as you'll hear the story as, as we, uh, as we, as we weave it through. I think that, uh, we found that, um, when we entered into our discussions and looking at data and, and talking to folks, uh, across the, the many that we spoke to and, and the county government, uh, itself, um, we found a very, uh, common and similar story that resonated throughout. That is that, um, there are systemic challenges that are in play here that, um, there's no single issue, there's no, uh, easy fix, there's no, there's not a single thing that can be done to address the issues, including, uh, compensation. If compensation were just the issue, uh, you could be done with it and, uh, resolve your issues. There are many, many other issues that are tended to, uh, really making sure that you have in place a competent team, uh, that you're able to provide services to, uh, your community, to your constituents, um, in a, in a, in a fashion that they've become used to, um, and even better and improved, um, in the years to come. So let us walk you through kind of the story, what we would like to tell you. It, it starts with a, um, a, a story that is all too familiar to, uh, many entities, not just Carroll County, that really begins with, um, a, uh, a kind of a perfect storm, if you will, of, uh, challenges that, uh, organizations like Carroll County and others are, are facing. So, Becca, let us go through the, the beginning, um, part of our deck here. So, I won't go through the executive summary, you'll have a chance to read that, but just a couple highlights of the executive summary worth noting. Um, so, some of the perfect storms started, uh, maybe decades ago, but I think was underscored by what happened in two thousand eight, two thousand and nine. Um, the, the fiscal realities, the Great Recession, as it was called by some, resulted in about a hundred positions, um, that were, uh, that were reduced or were lost, uh, within the county government, um, that have not been replaced. Uh, and so you've been operating, uh, the last decade, um, in an, in an environment with, um, where you're largely understaffed. One of the common refrains we heard from people, um, as we started our interviews, was that you'll hear us talk about, uh, this is what people would say to us, we're a county of one. Uh, we have one person that does this, we have one person that does that, we have one person that does this. And we, and we saw evidence of that. And the point that they were making was that, um, reductions in positions over the course of time have resulted in the burdens and responsibilities of, of core operational functions, uh, really residing, resting on a single individual, um, which of course creates a whole host of challenges for the county moving forward, including succession risks, uh, the liability and risk and vulnerability that you face, uh, when those people leave, they hold knowledge that is really unique to their, you know, part of the county government. Um, and you have, and you'll see in our story, um, kind of a, uh, underserved, uh, succession planning effort or, or, or knowledge transfer. Uh, so you have a, a, a large degree of vulnerabilities. And then as I'll point out in greater detail in the, in the next few slides, um, the pandemic and all of the elements that that brought to, uh, organizations like yours, um, uh, contributed to the, to this perfect storm. And so we just make a comment that, um, you know, it, it, Ted used the word transformational change, that's what will be required here. Um, and again, not just looking at compensation, there are technology issues, there's processes issues, there's structural issues, there's organizational issues, cultural issues, all of which have a, a important part of the story. So go ahead, Becca, let me start with just a little bit of background and context, it's important to understand, um, the market and, and the forces that will be at play, they're at play today, um, and they'll continue to be at play, uh, across your county government, um, over the next decade. Um, these challenges and, and the issues that are, uh, beginning to appear or that are, or that are in full force, uh, are not going away anytime soon. And as you'll see, as we go through the story, uh, you'll understand why. The first is, um, you have a, a, a changing demographic in, in the workforce. You know, you have, um, uh, you know, incredible, uh, increase across the country, not just in Carroll County, but across the country in, in retirements of the baby boomers. Uh, ten thousand Americans turn sixty-five every single day. Uh, and that rate will continue from today until the year twenty thirty. And so, yeah, as you'll see in a minute, Carroll County, within the next few years, forty-five percent of your workforce, uh, will be at or above retirement age, um, uh, within just a few years. Uh, and so what's happened is that, um, the millennial generation was largely seen as the generation that will replace the, the baby boomers as they retire. Uh, we saw an acceleration of retirements in, uh, during the pandemic. Uh, two million Americans, uh, retired in twenty nineteen, uh, an additional million, three million Americans retired in twenty twenty, an additional more than three million retired in twenty twenty-one. Um, so just in that period alone, uh, eight million Americans no longer available in the US workforce. What we see in the comment about the millennials is that today, the millennials represent about a little more than a third of the US working population. By twenty twenty-five, they'll represent, uh, along with Gen Z, they'll represent seventy-five percent of, of the workforce. And so that, that'll apply to Carroll County, too. Um, so by twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, the majority of the employees working in the county will be of a millennial and, and Gen Z generation. And so why is that important? It's important to understand that your workforce is changing and the, uh, things that attract, the motivations that attract and, um, well, people to join organizations and to stay at organizations, uh, are largely different among the millennial and Gen C generation than we found in the baby boomer and the Gen X generation, which is, uh, essentially what your workforce is today. Um, we also are experiencing low unemployment, um, or, and, and the labor shortage. Um, I'll talk a little bit more about the labor shortage, you know, pre-pandemic, we were, uh, the lowest unemployment in the US in, you know, the last fifty years. We're seeing some return to that, but compounded with, um, the labor shortage. So let's go to the next slide, Becca. So what's, what's causing some of this labor shortage? So I've talked about the accelerated retirements. Uh, we also know that in great number in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, women, um, have left the workforce, um, in great numbers. Uh, about two million, uh, a two and a half million women left the workforce in twenty twenty, some came back in twenty twenty-one, uh, but an estimated one point eight million women will not return to the workforce, um, largely stemming from desires to return back to the home, uh, return back to, uh, more, uh, work-life balance or opting for non-traditional, uh, career kinds of jobs. So looking for internet-based jobs or other, uh, sources of income. Um, we also know that, um, this will impact the, um, interest and motivation of millennials. And I always share this data point because it's staggering. And many of you or some of you may be experiencing this or seeing this in your own worlds and your own lives, but, um, there's a, there's an incredible transfer of wealth that'll be occurring in this country over the next, uh, seven or eight years, between now and the end of the decade, uh, by the end of the year twenty thirty, an estimated sixty-eight trillion dollars will transfer hands from the baby boomer generation to the millennials generation. They'll make the millennials the richest generation in American history. Prior to the pandemic, we knew that millennials, oddly enough, uh, would be the first generation in American history that would make less than their parents and they probably still will. Uh, but because of the wealth transfer, they'll be the richest generation in history. Again, why is that important? It's important to know because the motivations that will drive millennial workforce to county government are different than what prior generations were, were driven to. Um, and then, um, why I say this is a, really a decades-long problem is you had a declining birth rate in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties and probably even continuing into the two thousands across the country. And so we know, uh, we do a lot of work with higher education, every college and university in the country is preparing for a significant decline in college students, uh, by the year twenty twenty-six, knowing that the number of eighteen-year-olds that are gonna be in the country, about significant drop. And so the available workforce, uh, post-two thousand twenty-six, um, will not meet the same numbers, um, that are even in the, in the workforce today. On top of that, um, you've read about it, seen about it and experienced here in Carroll County, um, the, the great resignation or the big quit. Um, we know that three and a half million, uh, Americans quit their jobs, uh, every month, uh, in the month of, in the year of two thousand twenty-one, compounded by November and December, where four and a half million Americans, uh, quit their jobs. We don't know what the January numbers are, but I suspect they'll be, they'll be something similar. And so we've been looking at it, uh, other organizations have been studying it, uh, and so why are people leaving? Um, work culture, um, that, you know, um, Fortune Magazine did a, a study of three hundred thousand millennials, uh, and asked them, why are you leaving? Why are you quitting your jobs? And, and the top three reasons, number one was a toxic work culture. Um, if they thought that they, you know, felt that they worked in a, in a, um, uninspiring workforce. If they thought that they, you know, felt that they worked in an uninspiring workforce, if they had a bad boss, if they had a bully that they worked for, they're leaving in large numbers. That was number one. Number two was the lack of flexibility in where they work, so remote work options. And then third was pay, pay equity. And so we see some of that in the report we'll give here in a moment. So again, all of these things are impacting, will continue to impact your ability to both retain and recruit a workforce in the future. Go ahead, Becca. And as I mentioned, just repeating it, you know, this isn't a post-pandemic one year. We're going to get out of this and, you know, we're going to be back. This is, we think that the numbers and the underlying issues that are driving this are issues that are going to permeate the workforce and the landscape for the next decade. So in our report here and our work at Carroll County, we focused on four primary activities. One, we requested from Reberga and Ted and the team a whole host of documents, hundreds of documents. They were gracious and provided us. Your comment about open transparency gave us access to anything and everything we asked for. We've reviewed those, the policies, we looked at org charts, we looked at job descriptions. We looked at a whole host of data. So that was one activity, helping form our findings. The second was we got out and talked to as many people as made sense. We did 123 interviews, including each of you. We did other employees across the, across the organization, directors, managers, employees themselves. And then another 53 people added comments. So all in all, we had perspectives from 176 individuals. At that point, you get a pretty good sense of how people are feeling about things, where the issues are. We also created a staffing model, which we're not going to show in detail today. I'm happy to share it in detail, but we'll send that along, make sure you have that. But it projects the future staffing opportunities and options in front of the county. And then we used our, all of the information and data that was gathered as a result of the findings, the documentation review, even the staffing model to develop our report. And then just leading practices, things that we're aware of in the market. And that's what you really have in front of you again. Okay, so let me go through the findings. We found four thematic areas that really sort of continued again this perfect storm and challenges that are in front of you. The first is what we would put under the category of sort of a number of strategic challenges. And here, what we're pointing out, we'll point out in more detail, is that the county really doesn't have a clear strategy and vision for how it's going to address these issues, but how it's going to align investments and expenditures and address and prioritize the issues that it has in front of it. So there's not a commonly shared vision or strategic plan to gotten priorities and investments. So we'll talk more about that. Second, a whole host of workforce challenges that are impacting your ability to recruit and retain people. So the challenge is going to only get worse. And then pointing out that real risks, I pointed out that county of one, but other areas where you just have a significant risk and vulnerability around succession and staffing. Third area was just in the structure and staffing itself. So there are a number of opportunities to realign structures and gain some efficiencies. But many of those or most of those are, will be informed or aided by improvements in technology. Very low use of technology across the county today. You're behind the times. And so opportunities exist to create efficiencies through automation, through streamlining processes, which will allow you to sort of stabilize your workforce, be less reliant on people who process paper and actually turn jobs into more service-oriented, customer service-oriented jobs. And then this last point, and a thematic area, is really just the infrastructure and technology. That the technology itself is preventing you from advancing the organization in an effective and efficient way moving forward. So let me dive into each of these in a little more detail. Go ahead, Becca. So first of all, just a few strengths that we want to highlight. So these are good comments that people said and observations that we made about the workforce itself. Clearly, you have a dedicated and committed and hard-working workforce. Also a person, a real deep sense of commitment to the county and the community they serve. This is an incredible strength that you have. And it's probably by and large the reason that you've had fairly good retention. You won't always enjoy that, particularly as your workforce changes and you have a millennial and Gen Z workforce. Not that they won't be hardworking and committed, but you know, what you have in place today is a long-term workforce that has their heart, soul of the community and the county apart. And so that's going to be a challenge, replacing that over the course of time. High levels of pride in what people do and their role and their contribution. People think they are making and believe they're making a difference. And you have a lot of talent. There's a lot of talented people on the team. Good people, hardworking, as I mentioned, but also good, knowledgeable, smart people. Understand where the gaps are in service, but also where the limitations in recruitment things are. You have a very generous benefits package. That could be leveraged more and probably to a better extent to both attract people. And you'll need to do that moving forward. Your tuition benefits program was seen as good in support of professional growth. And then people want to talk about and recognize just the ample pay tie-off and the value that that's created and generated by that. All right, so let me talk about some of these strategic issues. So as I mentioned in the overview, you know, there's a lack of a shared vision and really strategic thinking in many of the activities. And again, for good reason. Part of the contributing challenge may be even the way you're structured as a government. Quite frankly, you have a fair amount of turnover and among commissioners. And so we're told that, as we would imagine, that, you know, commissioners are passionate and committed and, but they don't always see eye to eye on things. And they have different perspectives and different views over the years. And so gaining consensus among the commissioners on specific priorities and strategies changes. As commissioners change, so do those interests and priorities. So the result has been, when you look for a common theme and a thread of where we headed as a county and do we have a good strategic plan and vision for the future? It gets a little murky. And so certainly some priorities, year-to-year priorities, but long-term vision and priorities that you would see in other kinds of organization probably isn't the same. We also know that, you know, you've been sort of challenged over the years. Recognizing, as Ted said, there's no mystery on where some of the challenges are. But they needed investment, in some cases substantial investment, either in terms of staffing levels or pay or technology, which always has a hefty price tag. But I think the recognition has been that to do that, there needs to be more revenues into the county government. And that, you know, the appetite for increasing tax revenues or fees has not been strong. And so, you know, counties had to balance. They need to maintain a low-tax, a low-fee environment with a low-revenue environment to address some of these challenges that do require some investment. So we've seen that and we see some of the manifestation about that. We know that, you know, you've got this new integration of fire and EMS. Not clear what the long-term financial impact of that. We didn't study it to the fine letter and a detailed spreadsheet, but probably more to be done there and really understanding how that will impact your finances. We did make note that when we looked at a number of strategic things that are facing the county, we looked at the role of the county administrator and said, what, where is her role in driving and guiding these activities or these conversations or leading these more strategic initiatives or opportunities that are presented? And what we found is that by a large amount, the county administrator is focused on day-to-day operations. And for good reason, there's not staff. And so where in other governments and other entities and other organizations, you would see a deputy, a deputy director or a chief lieutenant to help manage day-to-day operations, which would allow the county administrator to act and address more strategic issues. You don't have that luxury here. And so county administrator is being straddled with day-to-day activities, which probably limits, again, the ability to address and resolve or move strategic issues forward. And so we just make this point down at the bottom of the page. The inability to address these strategic and foundational issues will have, you know, will limit the ability to make transformational change. So you'll see in our recommendations that all of this story has to kind of come together to address these rather mounting and strategic issues. Go ahead, Becca. Second issue we want to raise is really, as I mentioned earlier, my overview comments about the aging workforce. I'll show a chart in a second, but you know, nearly half of the workforce will be ready or over their retirement, your average retirement age in less than five years. And so when you say, you know, what are you doing to prepare for that? You know, what kind of succession plans do you have in place? There's a form and there's a general, you know, sort of check-the-box kind of process in place, but nothing really meaningful that is preparing people to take key jobs within the county. And so you don't see training, you don't see mentoring, you don't see an organized and structured effort to begin to transfer knowledge and to build successors so that people know how to get critical roles done. And in an environment where you have low use of technology, the lack of succession planning means that the people that are doing the jobs, they're relying on their knowledge, what's the knowledge that's in their head. It's not in the systems, it's not in the processes, it's not easily transferred. It's what people have learned over the last two decades of their job. And so that knowledge transfer needs to be something that we'll have a recommendation about that. Okay, Becca, let's go to some of the data. So if you look at this chart, your average retirement age is 62 and a half. And you can see how it starts to shape up. 105 people approaching that pretty quickly. I think about 132 people on the right side of the chart. Go to the next slide, Becca. So here you'll see that the top, this is where you're at today, 2021. About 30% of your current population is either at, over, or nearing the retirement age. 14% are at or above it. 16% are quickly approaching it, certainly within the next five years. And many of them, that largest chunk, within the next couple of years. We know about 2026, four years away, that those numbers increased dramatically. And so the number of people that will be at or above the retirement age, given just the current state, almost half your workforce, 45% of your workforce. Again, and so when you have a department of one or a department of one or two, that's a lot of impact that the county is going to be experiencing. Becca, go to the next page. So we talked about this and, you know, you're not alone in this regard. This isn't an issue that you need to Carroll County. This is a problem that every organization in the country is experiencing. If they're not, they've got, you know, some magic wand, but very few have. Almost everybody is really experiencing that. So, you know, what's compounding the issue here is you're trying to play catch-up. And so significant vacancies across the county exists. And we'll give some data and some numbers around that. And a lack of competitiveness in attracting and recruiting talent, contributing the inability to fill the roles. So Ted had mentioned it in his comments, but you know, you do have a low competitive compensation structure, which makes it difficult to recruit people. And again, in the reason I spent the minutes on talking about the national labor shortage, if you're competing for talent in an era where people are making job choices based on compensation and other variables. And again, you're competing for millennials, for the most part, who are going to be looking at compensation levels in your life there. So you're seeing it. I think you've all commented about it. You know, if the candidate pools are low, some of that can be attributed to your recruiting processes. We'll talk about that in a second. But others are really around this area of two things, what we would call compensation number one, but also what we have in the bottom of the page, what we generally refer to as an employee value proposition. There's been kind of some fancy consultant words there. But what it really means is what's the message that you're really selling to attract people to stay at the county, but come and work at the county? What is it good? Why, you know, tell me why this would be a good place to work? Yeah, compensation is part of it. What are the other attributes? And so when you ask people, what is that employee value proposition today? What are the compelling reasons why somebody would want to come to work here? That story gets a little blurred and people aren't able to articulate it. And so I think they're feeling the pain of that, that we need to improve that story. And there are some things, I talked about the benefits. There are some other great things about working at the county. But finding that storyline and using that to recruit people will be important. The remote and flexible work options clearly impacting recruiting talent. I don't know if you, any of you saw the woman from LinkedIn, who was on 60 Minutes a few weeks ago, but to a staggering data point. And you know, LinkedIn does a lot of analysis around recruiting and does a lot of recruiting through LinkedIn. And the data point that they gave was that pre-pandemic, that one in 67 jobs had a remote or flexible option to it. And that post-pandemic, that number is now one in seven. So it's gone from one in 67 down to one in seven. So again, hard to do and challenging to do, but we know. And you can look at that data point I gave about why millennials are leaving their job. It's relative and flexible work option was the number two reason. Becca, go ahead. So turnover, we know that there's been some significant turnover at the county. So your average turnover rates are about 10%. Guess that's okay. You know, other, it's probably okay in today's environment. Some organizations are experiencing higher than that. You have about 2% involuntary turnover, those who are being asked to leave, and about 8% people just resign. You have several departments that are over that 10%. And so you see some of them, Public Works in particular, Public Safety, were greater than 10% turnover. So we didn't talk to people that had left. It'd be another analysis of understanding that, understanding kind of that exit interview stuff, but you can guess what some of the issues are. Some of it could be workload, some of it could be pay, some of it could be working conditions. So all of those probably, and then just competition, like they're probably getting offers to go elsewhere. Go to the next page, Becca. So a number of comments and themes that we saw around just how people are feeling. Right, just kind of what's the morale? Again, we talked to 123 people. So we had a good sense of this and people wanted to talk about it. You know, we would sometimes just ask people in general, but in a very unaided way, people wanted to talk to us about morale. And so it was generally described as well. And so that translates to low employee engagement. And when you have low employee engagement, you have low levels of productivity. People just don't work as hard or as fast. And so that has a corresponding impact on service quality, service issues, and creates an inefficient organizational environment. Talked about compensation, we talked about flexible work. Some employees, many employees said to us, they feel unappreciated for their contributions. They, you know, we don't, there's, we couldn't find a, you know, what we would call a, you know, know, employee or a robust employee recognition program. You know, how are people recognized, either publicly or, you know, in both financial and non-financial ways? People want to be told they're doing a good job. And so people are feeling, I think, a bit unappreciated for the work. And particularly, again, in an environment where they believe they're operating with a hundred fewer positions than they had prior to two thousand and nine, and not getting the recognition for that. So we saw, you know, while there's generally belief that benefits are good, those will be hard sells, harder sell for a younger generation, Gen Z and millennials in particular, who aren't as interested in the benefits or pension benefits, I should say, when choosing jobs. They're interested in pay, you know, shorter term, shorter term gains. Now, we also saw, you know, people wanted to talk about morale and culture around, I don't feel like I'm going anywhere, I'm not being developed, my career development is limited, not limited training. And so one of the things we know from our work is that millennial and Gen Z in particular, they want to have defined career paths. And they want to know, you're investing in me, you care about me, I'm going to have professional growth here. I'm going to learn more, I'm going to advance my own personal and professional competencies. So hard to find that in any meaningful way going on in the county today. And again, not because people aren't interested or don't want to do it, I just don't think you have the resources or haven't aligned investments to do it. We heard about paid maternity and paternity leave benefits, you know, interest among, we see that again, you know, as in more progressive organizations that are looking for, you know, childcare support. Let me just make a comment about that. I meant to make this in my opening remarks. Hats off to you commissioners for doing this study. I do think that the most progressive and the organizations that are paying attention to these issues the most are doing this kind of thing, are looking at the issues, are challenging themselves to think about these, are asking hard questions. So credit to you as commissioners for doing it. Many aren't doing it and they're not burying their head in the sand, but to some degree they are, ignoring the reality. So credit to you for having the wherewithal to even be doing the study at first place.
If I may, Mr. Nastaja, thanks for recognizing that. I remember two years ago when we first went into the pandemic policies and how we had so much off-site employment, I had sent the email to both the HR director and the county administrator recommending that this is a prime opportunity for us to reevaluate and assess what it means to have employees and what type of benefits they have. So I am ecstatic with this, so thank you.
You're welcome. And you know, congratulations for even raising it then, you know, you were ahead of the curve. More and more organizations every day are kind of waking up to this. And again, credit to you for being ahead of the curve and having the forethought to do it.
Thank you.
Becca, I'm on page nineteen here, so we go into this page. I won't go into these details, but you know, there's a number of things in your charter, in your personnel policies that, again, these are sort of details, I'm happy to share them, but at this level, probably not all that interesting to you. But there's a number of things that probably just limit, again, your ability to attract and retain people. Again, just picking one, you know, you have an interesting tuition assistance policy, but it's got a really low reimbursement amount. You've got this policy in place where you've got to start, your starting salaries have to be a really low and a really limited flexibility in offering positions that are higher than some really minimum threshold. So a whole host of technical things here that I won't spend a lot of time on, but all of these are either impacting retention or culture or your ability to recruit. So as Ted mentioned, you know, a lot of folks wanted to talk about HR. And CHR is a bit of an impediment, is a barrier to progress. Some of it in their defense may be, again, some inability to invest appropriately and sufficiently in the area. But HR was generally characterized as a very compliance-oriented organization, compliance-oriented organization, very rigid, risk averse and flexible. And we get it, you know, governments tend to be that, but you have the opportunity to change that, I think. And, you know, the best HR organizations from the planet are doing things that are just the opposite of those things, that they have flexibility, they're, you know, they're taking managed risks, they have flexibility. So, you know, HR seemed as a bit of a barrier. They're perceived as lacking service orientation and not focusing on people, on culture, again, focusing on sort of process and rules and compliance. So, you know, just worth noting, we share a lot of this detail with Ted and Roberta. Okay, Becca, let's go to the next page. I won't go into this detail, but just a quick summary is that if you look at, you know, the HR organizations and the best HR organizations, what should they be really working and looking at? The model on the left, what you call a best practice model, has an appropriate balance between things that we would say are strategic, things that are consultative and things that are administrative. And strategic are like our succession planning, our workforce planning, leadership development, our compensation strategy, what are we doing about diversity, what are we doing about HR metrics? Consultative, how are we really, you know, managing employee relations, recruitment, performance management and administrative. At Carroll County, if you look at all of the things that are going on in HR, both in terms of activities and your resources and investments, the chart looks a little bit like it on the red. And this might be even an exaggeration of strategic, it might be even smaller than that. So very little strategic, some consultative, but largely an administrative compliance organization. So as Ted mentioned, you know, we did identify some opportunities for restructuring. It's important to note, though, that a lot of these, some of these will be independent investment or technology, some could be done, also those things. But let me run through where we saw some short-term opportunities. So you've got a planning function and a land and resource management function. Those aren't integrated today, they have very similar missions, and they could be combined into a single unit, which we believe, and I think they believe as well, would provide a more integrated approach to long-term planning strategy and addressing short-term priorities and activities. Public Works is a huge organization, large and complex. Probably the size of it is preventing barriers to good operational efficiency, so there might be a way to restructure that, you might take facilities out or consider taking facilities out, making its own unit into a standalone unit. Parks and recreation facilities, again, fragmented, kind of doing similar things at times, not aligning or integrating their activities, there's opportunities to improve that. I mentioned, you know, EMS earlier, EMS model, public safety, that has, I think, an opportunity for better upgrade, integration alignment. Grants administration, highly distributed, decentralized across the county. You know, leading to duplication of effort and inefficiencies, both in structure and a lot of manual processes, that I think is an opportunity to gain some efficiencies and some organizational improvement. Your administrative support function, again, largely decentralized, different responsibilities, uneven level of support that's given. And so another area where it might be an opportunity for centralization or consolidation. Your GIS, again, decentralized, probably an area you want to centralize and coordinate better, the technologies or just the roles lend themselves to have bigger efficiencies. Go ahead, Becca. Some areas that we thought might be a little overstaffed, collections, the administrative support roles, again, are to really identify whether they are or not, because so much of the work is manual in nature. You know, some of the overstaffing in the areas are driven because you're processing paper, so inefficiencies there. Some areas where it might be understaffed, we believe, your IT or technology services area. You know, I heard you all talking about, you know, cybersecurity, that's going to continue to be a challenge for every entity. You know, technology advances and your ability to deploy technology to transact with your customer base, with your citizens, and then it just internally is going to increase just naturally. And so having a good, solid, robust technology unit will be critical, I think, for the future success of the organization. Fire in EMS, we know that there's under, you know, two hundred employees that they're trying to hire. And so actual staffing requirements or resources, not really known. Again, we sort of took a high-level look at that. Roads operations, we know there's seventeen or more positions that are currently open, and that's been kind of going on for a while. And then some roles end up facilities and maintenance. Go ahead. I mentioned technology, can't underscore this enough. You know, the systems are really dated, your technology platforms are an impediment to gaining operational efficiencies, you know, leading again to manual, paper, slow processes, so slower transaction times. And I can imagine, you know, what I always say to my clients is that you'll see it among your workforce and among your clients, is the impact of consumer technology. What I mean by that is, the more that all of us become familiar with the ability of our phones to transact things in our personal lives, so we can go to Amazon, we can, you know, we can book a trip, we can order our groceries, we can get an Uber, all the things that our phones can do, people want to intersect and interact with the county in the same way. They want to be able to look things up and get quick access to data, simple, easy, just-in-time information and data, difficult to do now. So antiquated systems require paper, manual processes, which requires higher staff, you need more staff to do it. So you have that going on throughout the county. So lack of systems, lack of automation. Grants administration was identified as an area with a lot of manual work, again, creating, quite frankly, some risk and vulnerability, because the more you're engaged in these manual processes, the more opportunity there is for error, human error. So just make, you know, comment, process efficiencies and automation would reduce, you know, eliminate or need for more staffing. And so go to the next page. Some other comments on the technology front. Document management, how are you just even managing documents, sharing information, sharing documents? Very inefficient across the county. Have a heavily, heavy reliance on individual spreadsheets, Excel spreadsheets to manage most processes and many processes. Again, what's happening there is that people are creating their own processes to transact work and then just storing information, either on their computers or file cabinets or, but again, not in a systemic way, using common technology. So it creates security, data security risks. I mentioned, you know, technology services perceived as being understaffed, overwhelmed. So I think the rest of it is pretty much technology training, just the last point of the page there. You know, people want to know more. I think you have some capability in your systems today that you could be leveraging your technology to a greater extent, but in some cases, people don't even know how to use the technology that's in front of them. You see that comment in older workforces that have been around a while, so you have some of that going on. But another opportunity to gain some efficiencies through better use of technology. Go ahead, Becca. Okay, so those are our findings, and I think I'll just keep going unless anybody has any comments, but I'll run through our recommendations and then take off. Just a little questions, I'm sure, as we, unless anybody wants to make a comment up there. Okay.
Do you have any, you mentioned here inefficiencies, I guess, with permits process. The Excel program, was that brought up in your study? That was implemented in the county, I think, several years ago. It should be, I mean, that mapping and review should be in place.
Jen, did you hear anything about that?
I think, you know, we heard mention of it, but I think just the broader processes and workflows among many of these areas, including permits, you know, just still opportunities for streamlining, automation, just looking at the layers. So I think just more broadly, you know, probably more work to be done there in terms of gaining, you know, deeper and broader kinds of efficiencies, really in multiple processes.
Anything else? So let me, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, please, go ahead.
So we had, we had five thematic recommendations, and in the same fashion, each of these has a sufficient amount of detail behind them, but let me review for you the five key thematic recommendations. So the first one is, is to engage in a comprehensive planning effort, to develop that vision and strategy to guide the county's priorities, investments over the next five years. And as I think Commissioner Boucher mentioned, this might be an opportunity to do before, you know, the end of your terms this year. You know, it's, it would require an effort, but it might be a nice legacy thing that you could build for the county for years to come, is to get your arms around where are we really headed here and how are we going to address these issues? So talk more about that, but our recommendation is to do that, is to engage in a planning effort that says, here's where we're headed over the next five years, here's our challenges, and here's how we're going to address them.
I believe you made a very, very good point, because I think we are more suited to take this on than the new board. I know I had my sea lakes my first year in office, and it would have been very difficult for me as a new rookie county commissioner to even dig into something like this. So I think it is best suited for us with our experienced tenure to dig into this.
I agree with that, Commissioner, and you know, my fear for you as a county is that, to your point, I know you're going to have some significant turnover in your commissioners this year or into next year. You're right, you know, a new set of commissioners coming on board next year, you're going to be, you're already behind. And, you know, these challenges aren't going to get any easier. They're in front of you now, and, you know, waiting another year or two years and trying to get a plan in place that addresses these issues, I think it will just put you further behind. So that'll be something you all decide, but certainly our recommendation was for you to accelerate that and keep that in front of yourselves as an opportunity here over the ensuing months. A second recommendation is to really develop a plan to get after this succession, recognizing that even with a clear vision and plan to move forward, you're still going to have, because of the retirements, you're going to still have a fair amount of turnover. You'll see it. And so, you know, whether that's the full forty-five percent in the next three years, four years, you'll be close to that. And so that's a lot of knowledge. And so ensuring that you're addressing that, and then also the recruiting retention challenges. Succession's only going to get you so far, you know, you're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to, that might get you some knowledge transfer, but you're going to have to bring people in. And then retention, one of the things I tell my clients almost every day is that in this current work environment, environment, you know, employee environment, you have to have an obsession with retention, you have to keep your good people. And so building good strategies and plans to make that happen will be a key recommendation. We make a recommendation about implementing some of the staffing and organizational changes, I'll provide some detail around that. And then getting your arms around this technology piece. Again, I think you're behind the curve here, requires some investment, there's some things you could do now, but really advancing and accelerating here, technology. Technology is only going to serve the county and its citizens for years to come in a good way. And then identifying and establishing what are the resources and skills and competencies that we need to implement the plan. So let me talk about each of these. Go ahead, Becca. So as I mentioned, you know, the first, the first recommendation is to engage in this strategic planning effort. And what we say is establish a vision and strategic plan for the county that'll serve as a foundation for future priorities, investments. And to do so, engage the commissioners, the five commissioners and the county directors in identifying the vision. So really a collaborative effort between the key directors of the county and the commissioners to come together in probably a facilitated way, bringing you all together to do that. Identify, you know, what are our imperatives? Imperatives is a word that we often use in our planning to say, you know, what are the five to 10 things that we just absolutely have to get right in order to be successful to meet our mission? You'll be able to do that. And so identifying what those imperatives are and then building specific actions and activities for achieving those, those imperatives. And then incorporating, of course, you know, a costing analysis, what will it cost to do, where will the resources come from, how are we going to fund it? And that becomes the basis of a plan. Along with that, you know, we, we have a roadmap here at the end of the plan and of our report. But developing an implementation plan with timelines, we know that whatever plan you come up with, you're not going to be able to walk in the following Monday morning and turn on a light switch and get them all done. It'll take time. We've, we've recommended a set of activities that'll span a three-year horizon. So you'll want to do the same, right? Thinking about an implementation plan, what can we do this year, what can we do next year, what can we do the following year? But a plan, a structured plan will allow you to get to a share of points in the future. I mentioned the funding plan or requirement. And then, you know, establish an approach among the commissioners and county for doing that. Again, is it facilitated, do you do this, you know, how do you, how do you get that done? We can give you some advice and direction and guidance around that. And then what we said, both in a strategic way, is really consider engaging a deputy director role for the county administrator. At some point, the county administrator has to be a strategic leader of the organization. And as long as she is sucked into the day-to-day operations, that's going to be, that's going to prevent that from happening. So we think one of the recommendations as part of advancing the strategy is saddling the organization with that number two to the county administrator. Go ahead, Becca. As we say here, develop, you know, targeted plans for succession, I've pretty much mentioned. You know, developing a comprehensive talent strategy and, and plan and, and address workforce, personnel. So starting with a succession plan as part of your talent strategy. So what we mean by talent strategy is to say, hey, look, you know, what, what does our workforce look like over the next five years? We know that certain of our leaders, we can build succession and so we're going to, you know, the new leader of this organization is going to come from here, the new leader of that organization is going to come from here. And so succession will get us so far. But you also need to understand how many roles will we need to fill through recruitment? And so then building a pipeline around recruitment and how many roles will we need to retain and what are we going to do to retain people? So the details here, I don't need to go into all of them, really tell that story. So building a succession planning model where you recognize in a formal way, how are we going to start transferring knowledge to the leaders across our organization? It may not be leaders, it could be succession and your skilled trades. Super hard job to recruit for in, in the environment now. So how do we train the next level of skilled technicians out in our facilities groups and other critical elements? So all of that is to say, really build a succession plan and understanding what that model, model looks like. Next page, Becca. Knowledge transfer, very similar kind of approach here, but recognizing that most of the knowledge and key roles across the county today resides in the heads of one or two individuals. And so finding a way to extract that knowledge from their heads into systems, into documented processes, the tools, and then teaching people through a very structured mentoring, shadowing, apprentice programs, other areas and efforts will need to be known. Go ahead, Becca. So training and development, again, another part of this sort of talent strategy. How do we build, build more skills of people? So we want to transfer knowledge, we want to identify people who are success, can be successors. How do we build skills? How do we get more technology skills? How do we train people to be new leaders? How do we give them new competencies to manage a, a new workforce that's going to have a whole bunch of crazy demands? How do you manage a, if you go remote, how do you manage remote workers and hybrid work team? So that requires some training and investment in training and development. So a number of recommendations for how to engage in a training and development strategy. Go ahead, Becca. And then, and then recruiting, again, in your talent plan, a number of those positions, no matter what you do internally, both in training, succession planning and mentoring and apprentice, you still need to recruit your people into the organization. So you'll need to do that in a new way. Your current recruiting strategy and efforts will not be sufficient. And so thinking about how do we build new pipelines for hard-to-fill roles? How do we create partnerships with high schools, with Carroll County Community College? How do we develop workforce development, continuing education programs? What about internships, apprenticeships? How do we expand our networks, doing educational events, tapping into the community to showcase Carroll County as an employer? Targeted job fairs, outreach campaigns, using social media as a recruiting strategy. The employee referral program. So a number of recommendations here to build a more robust recruiting strategy. Okay, go ahead. Staying on recruiting, I talked about that employee value proposition, but you'll want to get that right. Why do people want to come to work here? So starting to understand and define that and then marketing that and telling people that. So, you know, fair and consistent policies, effective leadership, flexible work options, career developing growth, some of the things you see on the bottom of the page, could be potential components of a, of a future employee value proposition. Go ahead, Becca. And then, you know, you're going to have to think about your HR organization of the future. Once you're, we've got it, you know, you, you know, if you're going to have more planning and succession planning and recruitment, probably some changes in, in HR. And so thinking about restructuring and reimagining what the HR organization looks like will be important. Go ahead, Becca. Talking about, about culture, as we mentioned, culture, morale is generally low. So some, some specific recommendations there. We, we do think you'll need to address some of these compensation issues, particularly as you start to recruit in more millennials that aren't going to be as attractive to retention benefit. They'll be looking more astutely at compensation. So a number of things you'll see here in terms of getting that. And the, the second half of the CIGL work is really around compensation. So you'll get a lot of specific recommendations, a different team of folks are, will be working on it. Go ahead, Becca. We think that, you know, there's value in regularly doing an employee engagement survey, understanding, you know, where are we at today? You know, we say establish a baseline. You know, we've got this story to tell, we know it, but even understanding on a metric basis and a data basis, you know, where are we at today and, and how do people feel about us as an organization? And then using that on a regular basis to move the bar up. What are the issues that will make this a great place to work? Again, if you, if you adopt that notion that we have to have an obsession with retention, you want to know what's important to employees. And I won't go into this, this goes to that, you know, a number of sort of details around some of your complex personnel policies, but some recommendations for improving those, making them more attractive to both your workers and future workers. Next page. So total rewards. We know that the compensation work that's going on, we'll, we'll look at all of this, but it's really important to take a step back and say, what, what is the, what are those package of things that we're offering to our, our workers, our employees and our future employees that make them want to come here, stay here? And so it's not just the paycheck, but what is that, the overall reward structure that's in place? So, you know, voluntary benefits, flexible work, maternity leave, you know, these are some things that we're seeing in, in other organizations, not recommending them necessarily, but things to think about. Child care supplements, tuition benefits, wellness programs, recognition programs, stress relief. You know, these are what modern, contemporary employers are thinking about, again, in this, in this arms race for talent, the kinds of things that others are thinking about. Okay, go ahead, Becca. Remote and flexible work, have to think about this. Not easy, I know, and it's not available for everybody. I know some shifts, just you, you got to be out there and on the road. And so it's not for everybody, but really thinking about what is our remote hybrid work strategy? We know that, you know, if you take that, that LinkedIn data, one in seven jobs today are offering a remote or hybrid work option. There's also a sort of an interesting issue going on around workers' compensation coverage for those employees that you have that work in Pennsylvania. If anybody wants any details about that, I know Jan or Becca can spend details, but we made a recommendations for sort of improving that. Go ahead, Becca. As I mentioned before, a new generation of workers want to see evidence that they'll have an opportunity to grow their careers. And that may be by level and promotion, but it could also just be in terms of the knowledge that they gain in their job. So developing, you know, what are called career paths or ladders, how do you elevate yourself through a career will be important. And, and again, telling that story to a new generation of workers. And then probably bolstering your performance management program. Know that I think you have marginal clients with people really getting performance management. We know in particular millennial generation, Gen Z, they want constant and regular feedback on their performance. And so you'll need to get better at this as time goes on. And now I want to go through these again, a number of sort of policy changes, all sort of technical in nature, which we think will help both the recruiting or retention things. Probably minor fixes, but things that are probably impediments within your policies today. So go ahead, Becca. We go past this, here's just an example. So so our next recommendation is really, is, is this fourth one, which is, you know, implement staffing and organizational changes and realignments to gain organizational, operational efficiency. So we talked about some of these, some areas where you have some staffing needs. So we talked about the deputy director. We think there's got to be a priority on your roads staff. So there's, I think, 17 open positions there today. That needs some attention, so recommend getting after that rather quickly. Additional staffing priorities, again, this could be all within the context of a broader strategic plan, but certainly your technology services, HR's got to be sort of rethought or reimagined and then even grants management. And then we also did a staffing model, which we're not going to share today, but we'll make sure that you have it, that will show us predicted turnover and other staffing elements in great detail. Some other thoughts around organizational restructuring alignment, we talked about these in reviews and we'll go into great detail, but again, consider merging planning and land and resource management. I think there's opportunities to do that. Think about restructuring your public works and transitioning maybe the facilities, unit out, creating a general services unit, revising that grants management structure, streamlining your administrative support, probably consolidating. And then, you know, even think about centralizing or consolidating GIS function. Go ahead, Becca. Might be some outsourcing opportunities. We, I level talked about fire EMS, didn't get into great detail in our conversation, I know it was new. But, you know, it's always an opportunity of, you know, a cost-constrained environment, so something that you thought of. Go ahead, Becca. Talking about process redesigning automation, you know, easy to say, not easy to do. But, you know, getting after this, automating those processes that are resulting in extra staffing levels, slow response times to even your, you know, core functions to your community need to happen. And so we think that there's a series of recommendations here to document your processes. And if you go through an exercise of process redesign where you map them through, we use what we call swim lane process mapping, identifying, you know, areas and activities that either can be automated or completely eliminated. What we always find is that inefficient processes are straddled with years of sort of bureaucracy. And so how do we get those out of the system and take those out? And so we said, you know, launch or commission a formal effort to do just that. So go ahead, Becca. Areas that we thought would be probably in a priority, prioritized way, grants management, administrative support, permits, recruiting and hiring, classification, promotion, finance, accounting, all of these are sort of areas that are impeded by inefficient processes, manual processes, low use of technology, automation. Go ahead, Becca. Okay, then I talked about, you know, technology. Again, not an easy thing to do. But what, what we see in, in organizations that do this well is they create what they call an IT governance model. So they're thinking about it, they're developing a strategic plan, you know, a roadmap for IT investments. And so again, recognizing that you're not going to do this all at once, but again, kind of a strategic plan for IT as part of your overall planning efforts. On the bottom of the page, you know, we, we, we talked about some areas that are in critical need of technology upgrades, automation. So your document management, grants management, online collections, HR, and then some of the just outdated programming languages that have gone away, you know, in some organizations a couple of decades ago. You know, we know that funding investment, you got, you're going to have to pay for this. So again, part of the planning effort, understanding what those, what those investments look like. Again, knowing you can't do it overnight, but how do you project this out over a multi-year period will probably be required. We say here, just in, in terms of, you know, in resources, roles, skills and competencies, you know, HR and IT, you know, again, we think they're sort of, the competencies in those area will be, to be sort of elevated and expanded. So you want to pay particular attention to that. Some recommendations about how to put that forward. And then some specifics on the next page here, Becca, you know, future HR capabilities. You know, all the things we talked about. You, you all were bold enough to get to this point. The next bold step will be, now we're doing it. And so, you know, making sure that we have a talent plan in place with a strategic plan in place will require, you know, a different kind of HR organization and IT organization today. And so on our last page, a lot of words here, but as I mentioned, we tried to recognize that, you know, where do you even start? And we had a lot of recommendations in there. And so what we tried to do was to create a roadmap that identifies a three-year progression of billing on each successive year. And so year one, you see number one item, share the report with commissioners doing that today. And then almost immediately develop and launch a strategic planning effort. That's where it starts. Let's get consensus, let's get a plan in place. Then all the things that go, you know, secure funding, you know, identify the succession plan, do our IT and HR competency plan, think about the remote work, our IT planning effort. What are we going to do about fire and EMS, more HR transformation ideas, that comp class which is coming. Start some of that process mapping and expanding your total rewards and benefits, really building that point, point of value proposition. And then really developing a strategic recruiting plan. That's a pretty big lift in a year. But then building upon that in year two where you're now implementing a succession plan, you're now doing training, you're building, you know, more tools and so on. By year three, now you're, now you're fully implementing your succession plan, you're completing your technology. So it shows you again, aggressive implementation and effort. And so with that, that's, that is our plan. We have an appendix of the number of materials, including the staffing plan. We have an appendix of the number of materials, including the staffing plan. But let's stop sharing there, Becca, and take any comments, questions, or any other any other thing that we can address.
Scott, I appreciate and your entire team, the effort so far. What you shared with us in a relatively short amount of time, a lot of information for us to digest and think through amongst ourselves and with our team. You know, looking at the thematic, you know, verticals, you know, the division strategy, workforce structure, and then technology, you know, is a good way to package it. And then we can take a look at this. It kind of makes me think of, you know, the id ego, superego, you know, throw it all out there without any restraints and then have all restraints, which we're going to be walking through in a few weeks as we walk through the budget. And then balancing all of that together, meeting our community needs and how to be not just effective, but efficient moving forward. Because that's really what we're talking about is how do we balance our effects and our efficiencies together for a healthy Carroll County government to meet the needs of Carroll Countyans. I think personally, I appreciate the work you've done so far. It ain't an end state, it's a journey, and you're on a journey with us. So I really do have confidence in that as well. Great information, and great information again, you know, parroting Commissioner Wance, we do not do this behind closed doors. We do this out there. And I just ask that folks who are listening, who are capturing this information, do not jump to a conclusion because of one bullet point. Because it's going to inevitably not be tied to the resources necessary. And, you know, it has to all be looked at in its in its total. We have to be responsible and mature not to look at one bullet point. I ask the community do the same, but we all work together. And we're always available for the community to to go down further down the road with this information. So you laid it out really well. Are there any other comments, Dennis, anything?
Just a lot of information. It all looks like really good information, just going to take a lot of time to process and go over it and reread. I pulled like five or ten pages to the side, which I'm going to go over again a second time, that kind of thing, before I can actually melt it down to my brain to figure out what what I. And I see what your steps are, but I have to put in my process what my next steps would be. Really appreciate it, though.
Commissioner Wance?
No, just to thank you again, great information. Some of this information that we received today are things that some of us talked about previously. So that's interesting, too. And I appreciate that being brought to the to light, because in in an organization such as ours, when one brings something up, others will look and go, well, wait a minute. What are you doing again? But we that that'll help in the process. So I appreciate it. We do have a lot of work to do. I think it's going to be something that's that's going to be very challenging for us to do. Because now we have to to try to go to work with this, with limited staff anyway. So it's sort of a catch twenty-two, if you will. So we'll do the best we can to try to implement as much of this as we as we can. A little challenged by the timing here. I wish we would have done this three years ago, because it's hard to set strategic goals and plans when there's new people coming in in just a very short period of time. And it almost gets to a point where it's a little bit on the verge of disrespectful, because you're sort of telling the new folks that are going to be here soon that we want them to do this. So that's going to be interesting, too. I've got a little bit of a challenge with that. So but all in all, the information and the way in which you acquired it, I truly do appreciate it. Thank you very much, and we got work to do.
Yeah, we're going to have to look at the timing, like you said.
Timing's important. And I also look forward to the rest, because I know there's compensation coming, which is critically important, so that we can marry all this together. But there's there's just, I love the information, there's just a few things on my mind that make me go, yeah, I'm not sure that that's going to work. But we'll we'll see where we go, so.
I think we should blame Ted for not getting it done three years earlier, but you know.
Or that last group of commissioners should have done it, too.
They should have, well, you know.
Lame luck, bro.
Okay, Commissioner Weaver.
Can't argue with anything you presented today. I think in our back of our minds, we kind of knew it, but as we get into dealing with government, we kind of, well, we'll deal with that later, or forget about this, or it gets forgotten. Sometimes we forget about the changing workforce, the change we have to make to keep up. I mean, you get into the same old rut that, you know, we've been doing it this way, we continue doing it this way. And we forget about the, I guess, the mindset in the workplace, how the workplace is changing, what we're going to have to do to get to that point. We do need efficiencies, and technology is part of that. And I made the comment on Exella, I know we worked on this years ago. I thought that was implemented better than what it is now, because that way, that was an efficiency that should be really help maybe even reduce work staff in some areas, and I'm not sure how it's actually working, I've seen some of it. But you you gave us a lot of information. The biggest factor is we have to act on it. The fact that we went through this, if we don't take this plan and actually dissect it, go through step by step, we haven't done a thing. And this is why we did it, and I firmly convinced that we need, I don't care if it's this board, the next board, keep looking at this report, go back to it, and start to look at each aspect of it and make changes where we need to in our government. I I was really impressed, thank you.
Turning an assessment into an action plan, absolutely. Commissioner Boucher?
Yes, Mr. Nastaja, I want to thank you and your staff for all the work you put into this. It's a lot of Ministry of Science stuff to go through. And the best simplistic terms I can give to the public out there is think of the county as a work truck. It's still running, but you know you got a bearing going out, and you can hear it. It keeps running, that bearing eventually don't go out, you don't be broke down unless you take the time and get the mechanic to fix that bearing. And that's, I think, precisely where we're at as a county. We need to fix that bearing that's going out. Also, I remember when I first came on board, Commissioner Frazier said, Eric, being a county commissioner when we first come on board is like drinking out of a fire hose. Well, this report is going to be like drinking out of a fire hose. And we don't collectively have all the ability to solve this, but with the help of our staff, who has a lot of responsibility in this, we're going to be able to pull this off. And I want to give special recognition to Director Ted Zaleski, because I believe he is truly a champion of this. I think he's got more insight in how this county government is run than anyone else in this building. And the fact that he is on board with this is a tremendous asset, a leader, to be a leader and guide us in this. So thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else from the cheap seats? Go ahead, Ted.
Just wanted to follow up on one thing Commissioner Weaver said. We talked about the possibility of technology allowing us to reduce the number of positions. I just want to point out, nothing in the Siegel study led to an idea that we might be able to reduce positions. What they suggested is we might be able to avoid adding some positions if we can improve our.
Sorry, I'll rephrase that. I didn't mean it exactly.
Yeah, again, it's it's no, it's about efficiencies, it's about, you know, lessening the duplication, ensuring there's redundancy, you know, as we move forward. Really good job from all, Roberta, Tim, anything? Nope, okay. Again, Scott, Rebecca, Jennifer, thank you so much for your time, and continue to look forward to the dialogue.
Thank you again, it's an honor to work with all of you. And, you know, any questions you have about our work, we're always available and ready to to meet with you collectively, individually. And I'd just say one last thing, don't beat yourself up too much about not doing this three years ago. A lot of these challenges were were brought to light and exacerbated by the pandemic.
Correct.
So while some of them were brewing beforehand, the bearing was starting to go out before the pandemic. But the pandemic really brought it to light.
Yep, the environment had to vote, so, yep. I appreciate that. Okay, from that very informative briefing, let's talk about the landfill tonnage FY twenty-three budget. Recommended annual landfilling tonnage for FY twenty-three budget. We blame him for everything.
We blame him for it.
Yeah, well, you know.
You?
You.
Wait, what?
Come on up. If Ted wants to stick around.
You're the next contestant.
Okay, go ahead, Cliff, what's on your mind?
Commissioners, good morning, and thank you very much for for having us in today. Now, we're here this morning to ask for some guidance on two items as we finalize our recommended fiscal twenty-three solid waste enterprise fund budget. As you may recall, during the fiscal twenty-two budget deliberations, the board considered two specific changes at Northern Landfill. Those changes would have been increasing the recycling tip fee from the current thirty dollars per ton to fifty-five dollars per ton on July first this year, twenty twenty-two. And second was to increase landfill tonnage to fifty-five thousand tons, and we had a pretty in-depth discussion about that last year. Ultimately, the board approved the recycling tip fee increase to be effective July first, twenty twenty-two, and we are on a trajectory to do that. But they pushed off the disposal tonnage increase one year, pending other ongoing initiatives. Basically, those discussions all occurred before we purchased the neighboring property adjacent to the landfill. So currently, DPW, along with budget staff, are finalizing our recommended twenty-three enterprise fund budget. So we respectfully request board guidance on these two following items. The first is regarding the recycling tip fee. Does the board still desire to increase the recycling tip fee to fifty-five dollars a ton on July first of twenty twenty-two? And the second would be regarding the annual landfill tons, just as the situation was last year. Staff recommends not increasing the landfill tonnage to fifty-five thousand tons in the budget for various reasons, we can go over most of them. But the biggest one is the schedule for the master plan is four years. Or I'm sorry, if we did fifty-five thousand ton, we'd be out of room in cell four or cell three. We would need cell four and the transfer station built and operational in four years. And we have a five to seven-year window with regard to the master plan. So that is the biggest crux or issue with that. We want to thank you for your time, and we can address any questions or comments that you may have.
Just a couple of follow-up there things as you as you start to think about this. You know, one, the the operating plan as it exists is built on those two decisions being in in place. So when we talk about the the increase in the recycling tipping fee, we've assumed that in the numbers. And when we talk about increasing the amount going into the landfill and reducing the amount going to transfer, that is built into the the operating plan. Now, Cliff's point about, is it actually viable for us to increase the landfilling to the point that we have built the plan on right right now? I think that's a a really important point. I'm with him on his concern about this, you know, is this is this doable? So you have two different decisions, though. One is, does the recycling tip fee change, stay in place? And the other is, are we going to change how we're landfilling? And on that one, that doesn't have to be a yes or or a no. We could go back to where we were. We could do what you built into the plan, although we're saying that's probably a problem. Or we could go somewhere in between those. Now, every every time we increase the amount of landfilling we're doing, we're decreasing the life and taking us closer to Cliff's concern. Every time we increase the transfer, we're also increasing an expenditure that's not built into our plan. So with with this whole thing, I mean, if you're going to consider changes, we have to consider, what does this do to landfill life? What does this do to our costs, and how does that affect the bottom line?
Cliff, on your thing here, you have the the processing costs as decrease of ninety-eight dollars a ton to thirty-six dollars a ton for recyclables.
Correct.
Is it?
This based on January's numbers.
Okay, but that but you also added to that the fifty-six sixty-five a ton for hauling and processing, is that correct?
That's correct, and that that's generally consistent, it increases a dollar or so every year because of cost.
Okay, so and then my question would be, why would we decrease the increase? Because we're still we're still not even meeting what it costs us to process that.
Understood. The the rates in the general region are thirty, maybe maxing out at thirty-five dollars a ton. So it does put us above the regional rate, but however, like you said, it would not cover anywhere near the total amount, or at least would cover one. Again, it's being brought up to, again, guidance for us to prepare the budget and just to give the board one last opportunity to consider which way to go on.
And how many tons a year are we landfilling right now?
From the landfill side or we're on the recycling?
No, on the landfill side right now, the second question.
This budget season, fiscal twenty-two, we were budgeted to landfill twelve thousand five hundred tons. We can do a lot more than that, but the fifty-five is an issue from a schedule standpoint.
So in order to get to the five to seven-year plan that we that the master plan has, what is the tonnage that we would put in that we would landfill each year? And and put us at, let's say, the seven-year mark instead of four?
Considering that when we do this analysis, we also try to retain some tonnage for storm debris, you know, event, natural disaster events like that. Somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand tons a year is a good, in my opinion, is a good comfort zone.
Okay, so twenty-seven thousand tons a year, we saw seven years to get everything else in place.
Yeah, but a little more than that, but that allows for things to happen.
Right, got you.
Thanks for asking, good question.
Thank you.
And you're very welcome. And that would save us money, right? Since we're not transferring out.
Yeah, we would have an incremental benefit, yeah, because we would be transferring less, so we would have less transfer costs. It's certainly not going to cover all of it, but it's, it'll make it less expensive deal than if we were just landfilling twelve thousand.
And just on, you know, there's the cost side, there's also the the risk side here, and I just don't want to make, I want to make sure we don't lose that. And right now, we don't know, we don't even know that we can open another landfill yet, I mean, beyond cell four. So if we we bank our thinking on how long this landfill will last, but we don't get another landfill, then we we still have a problem. And that's and that's not me arguing what you ought to do here, I just need to make sure we weigh in that.
So so my concern is, we based our five-year budget on this fifty-five dollars a ton.
Fifty-five thousand tons.
Fifty-five thousand.
Well, both, actually.
Right.
Both numbers are fifty-five seventy.
Oh.
But we also based our, we we also, the fifty-five dollars a ton is the one that I'm kind of looking at.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at that. Which kind of helped us see what the out years, as we always do with everything, would look like. And I'm concerned if we make it if we make a change now on that part of it, that it could be a huge negative effect. I am, however, based on your question, thinking that we could back off of that fifty-five thousand tons per year. I think that probably would be something we could do. But I'm hesitant right now to do anything, since it's the first week of March, that would have either a negative, it would have a negative effect on our budget. I think we're too close.
Through twenty-three.
I understand that, but on the future, on the budget in general, and when we, for the for the per-ton rate is what I'm talking about.
Well, the two pieces have two different timelines, and Cliff can talk more about this than I can. But if if the recycling tipping fee is going to remain in place, you pretty much need to be acting to notify people now, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And since it was approved last year, it already went through public hearing, we're past that schedule. Now, it's just a matter of notifying the haulers.
Yeah.
Now, on the other piece, how much are we going to landfill? That is not as urgent an issue, and we can run through scenarios with you.
Do we have any understanding of the engineering of the new property as far as its ability to create? You know, more of a landfill capacity? I mean, have we done?
The last update that I gave to the board here, probably a month or so ago.
Right.
What's being done is the field surveying at this point. And finalizing the RFP to go out for the master plan, which should be out in a week or two.
Okay.
Out of the Northeast Authority. So do we have a better idea, not really?
No, no, I get you, I, you know, I appreciate that refreshing me, thanks.
And the follow-up to that question would be, based on what the state says about opening new landfills.
Say or may not say, correct.
Say or whatever, however they, however the wind blows. Would it be considered a new landfill if we have the property now to add new cells? Or does that remain, this is your landfill, and you can kind of do what you want with it? Or does that remain, this is your landfill and you can kind of do what you want with it?
The only way that I can answer that is to look back at the last time a moratorium was put in place, which was under Governor O'Malley. And if you had an application in place already submitted to the state, which the very first phase is pretty simple document. Then you're in line and you would not have been kicked out of line. So our goal is, we're going to presume that's maybe what's going to come down again. We want to get that first piece in, so we reserve our place in line.
Okay.
And but again, anything can change from there.
No, but that's good.
Yeah, but if it's already there, I would argue that we're just tweaking.
Or screeching?
No, we don't screech, and we don't tweak. I appreciate that.
Yes, we do, we tweak.
No, okay, no, I I do, because I thought, you know, the precedent had been set, so the expectation is that it would remain. You know, there is risk associated with it, but that's the expectation, so I appreciate that.
What part are you talking about, what do you mean?
Being in line, being.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And and to the, to the best of my knowledge, there isn't a draft legislation that's addressing that now. When O'Malley did it, it was an executive order, so anything is possible.
That guy, right, okay. So what do you want from us today?
The first is whether we, well, whether we decide to continue to leave in place the fifty-five dollars a ton recycling fee. And then that really, I don't know that that needs an up or down vote.
No, I think we just have to confirm that that's what we want to do. And because we already made a motion on that to put it into effect, and my suggestion, keep it in effect.
I'll have to reiterate that, and the reason I want to is, I think the recycle market is extremely volatile. And I'd hate to see us modify and then half a year away or a year away, we're back to where we were before, and then we're jumping back and forth. So I do like the consistency, as Commissioner Fraser said, to hold our course, it's already in place, it's structurally implemented in our budget. And I like the idea of your staff and discretion finding a happy medium on the tonnage that we're going to put in our landfill based upon the timeline of the future expansion.
So what do we need? Because my suggestion again, change the tonnage from fifty-five thousand tons to twenty-seven thousand tons a year. That way it gives us the timeline to stretch it out and get other things in place that we that you're saying that we need to do. So my guess is we need a motion to change the tonnage that we're going to landfill from fifty-five thousand tons a year to twenty-seven thousand tons a year. So I would make that motion.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, because it's a change.
Then I'll second that.
Now, that makes it twenty-seven as it is or twenty-seven additional?
No, no, twenty-seven altogether.
And your body.
Fifty-five to to twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, five or twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Not twenty-seven thousand one, just twenty-seven thousand, okay. I got a motion, I got a second. We understand what this is, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, now let's talk about twenty twenty-two pipe culvert repairs. That's going to be a tough one. And replacements. Good morning.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with Bureau of Engineering, requests your approval to award the contract for the pipe culvert repair replacement to Stanballs Incorporated an amount of seven hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars. This work consists of repair and replacement of pipe culverts on twenty county roads. The Office of Procurement advertised for an invitation for bid. We received six responses, which are listed on the briefing paper below. Stanballs did come in at the lowest bid, and we are requesting your approval with, and it's, and with, within the adopted budget, no additional funds will be necessary.
Thank you. This work is necessary to make repairs, replacements, and installations in new place prior to our payment and preservation projects where we mail and overlay and reclaim some of our roadways. As was noted, there's twenty roadways with thirty-nine different sites along those roadways. And we're going to be doing pipe replacements, new pipes to address issues or property owner concerns, end walls, inlets, stream maintenance, maintenance of traffic, and roadway patching before we can come and make final repairs. We're very familiar with Stanballs, they've performed this work for us in the past, and they anticipate getting started as soon as the weather permits.
I make the motion, the Board of Commissioners award the contract for twenty twenty-two pipe culvert repairs slash replacement to Stanballs Inc. in the amount of seventy, seven hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Second.
I got a motion in a couple of seconds. Any further discussion in this?
I do have a question. There's one of the bids that has a number, but also has not responsive. How's, if they gave us a bid, how is it not responsive?
They were not pre-qualified to perform this work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Got it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wish everything was that easy.
Okay, let's talk about the twenty twenty-three consolidated transportation plan priority letter.
You guys don't be more difficult than them?
Nope. And this is.
I don't know, Mary's making promises, I'm not sure about that.
A letter to go to the newly Secretary of the Honorable James Porter. Go for it.
Okay, you have this in front of you in your packets?
Yes, ma'am.
This marked up letter, okay, then I'll just work from this. What this is, is last year's letter, everything in highlighted is new language for this year.
Okay, including the secretary?
Yes, yes.
Well, there's a lot of things, yeah, if I missed anything, let us know. But this came from our discussion with you last month, where you gave us direction on the changes to last year. As you'll recall from the last few years, some of you more than that, we do keep to the same structure of the letter typically, and we just make the changes from there. So I'll just go page by page. On the first page, those are pretty much just technical changes, things we're thinking them for that happened this year, and changes in dates and names. On the second page, there's something a little bit more significant. You switch the priorities. The first priority is now Maryland ninety-seven, for years that had been the second priority, but we switched that, so that has been changed to the highest priority with the same breakout project, asking for a feasibility study, and the purchase of Right of Way is very important. So now the second priority is Maryland thirty-two from twenty-six to the Carroll County line. The only change made there is the notation regarding Warfield at Historic Sykesville and the recent tax credit.
So the reason for the breakout as one of the priorities for Project for Ninety-seven is we need that as our first step to get into what they call Chapter Thirty submission, and that's where the funding ends up coming from, is those Chapter Thirty. So that's why I wanted to let you know, if you're thinking, why are we not doing something else? It's because we need that Chapter Thirty submission to go to the next step from the state.
So I'm going to move on to page three. There are really no changes other than there was a newly adopted Town of Sykesville master plan, that date has been changed. But again, the breakout projects are the same for the Maryland thirty-two, those came out of the Pell study from about four years ago, and those remain remain the same. The third priority remains Maryland twenty-six from thirty-two to the reservoir. There is no new language, the breakout project for that remains converting eastbound Maryland twenty-six right turn only lane at Georgetown Boulevard. And that came out of the twenty twenty S H A corridor study that was presented to you, I believe, in July of twenty twenty.
And with that, they have done a lot of work giving us, that corridor study was part of the discussion. They provided us with an access management plan that we'll be utilizing as new projects come forward on the Maryland twenty-six corridor. So even though physical things haven't been done, there's been a lot of background work and movement forward and getting the plans prepared so that when things do get ready to move forward with any construction, we're all in agreement.
Okay, so the fourth priority remains Maryland one forty corridor improvements, and there is a breakout project for which there has been progress. So I noted that we're pleased that it has received design funding for the jug handle, and we look forward to the ultimate construction. So you'll recall, we added a new fifth priority, which is the Maryland twenty-seven corridor improvements from the Carroll County line to Lychee Road. I do have maps, there was a request for a map, if anybody would like a map, I didn't include it in the packet.
Is it included?
I don't believe I included it, but.
I mean, I think we're good.
I saw it before, I don't need to see it.
Yeah, but you, I mean, I'm.
You can finish it.
We're good, it's okay.
Thank you.
And this write-up pretty much came from the Town of Mount Aries request letter, as well as their corridor study from a few years ago. There's nothing too specific in it at this point, but it is pointed out that as we move forward with it, breakout projects will be identified and prioritized. There's a number of them identified in Mount Aries corridor study, but it really is too early at this point with the different developments that are under discussion to know what the priority would be. So does anybody want to make any changes to that language since it's all new, or is that language okay? Okay, I am now on page five with the two urban reconstruction called streetscape projects. The first one is in Sykesville, and we're pointing out that this year there has been progress made, the county is working on the water and sewer upgrades. And we also pointed out that the Town of Sykesville is advancing engineering efforts for several other adjacent projects to build off of the planned urban reconstruction. These efforts include parking upgrades, expanded sidewalk and pedestrian facilities, and improved multimodal connectivity. And also, we talk about the bridge, I believe. Yes, the next highest priority is the existing bridge over the south branch of Patapsco River.
And that was something the mayor mayor felt strongly about to have included in the letter, so.
Oh, absolutely, yes, because, I mean, it's it's actually in Howard County, that bridge.
Okay.
So it's it's got to be a partnership between Howard County and Carroll.
So the second streetscape, which has been in the letter for a number of years, is New Windsor. Again, there's been progress made in this, and we talked about this when we were here last month, that New Windsor has ninety-five percent water main improvement plans and specifications complete, and they are making progress in discussions with S H A, so that language has been added. Excuse me. Also on page six, regarding transit projects, that's new language, but it's reflecting the language that's always been in there, and it's reflecting what's provided to us by Public Works, that you've also approved for the transportation plan. There are no changes to the bike pedestrian trail projects, the Westminster Community Trail hasn't had any updates, and the Governor Frank Brown Trail is still waiting for progress based on the security issues at the Readiness Center. We continue to point out three other issues. The Maryland one forty Sullivan to Market is also a priority of yours. Maryland thirty-one at Medford for safety concerns, study for safety concerns, as well as Maryland twenty-six at Johnsville Road, again, safety concerns. The new highlighted language at the bottom of page seven was provided to us by the Department of Public Works, they would like that added. The first paragraph, at least, that's their language, so we took that, we brought that to you last month, and you agreed to put that in. The rest of the new highlighted language on pages seven and eight was what we discussed with you that came from the from BMC, all the jurisdictions are inserting this language into their priority letters, we have talked to them. I'm not sure if it's identical language, this was the language that was provided to us, and so we inserted it in as written. It basically references the corridors and projects that are in the Baltimore regional area, and this is a show of unity and cooperation among the jurisdictions. But at the bottom, we do note the two projects that we consider inter-jurisdictional and important, which is Maryland one forty through Westminster, as well as thirty-two to twenty-six in the Sykesville area. And those are the changes, as well as a few names, and if you're in agreement, we can
Any.
Take the highlighting out and.
Any edits, changes that want to be made? I think I really appreciate the responsiveness and the and the work you all did in doing this. Okay, do I need a motion to approve?
I may as well approve the
Transportation, consolidated transportation.
Okay, I got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll work with Mike Fowler to get signatures then, as our practice has been at the delegation, and send it off after we receive your signatures as well.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you so much.
This reminds me of when I was a kid, not so many Christmas lists.
I need a.
And is it Christmas list?
I need a review of the summary of closed minutes from February seventeenth on, what was the topic? Land acquisition.
Excellent, this is pretty easy. Motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a couple of seconds. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I have, Chris, do we have any callers?
No callers, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything for open admin at this point?
Yeah, one thing real quick, I forgot priority Carol, I don't know how many folks are still listening, but this Saturday from nine to twelve at Westminster High School is the Celebrating America History Day Expo. That's been kind of forgotten in the pandemic world, but they're trying to get it back now. So it goes from nine to twelve in the lobby at Westminster High School. I actually was a judge this year for one of the categories, so was Vivian Daly. She had one category, I had the other, and had a good time looking at the, again, some bright young people who put some remarkable programs in front of us. So if you get a chance, nine to twelve Saturday, hit Westminster High School to see some really great exhibits.
Thank you for sharing that, absolutely. Anything else for open admin? Alberta?
Just quickly, each year we have to appoint a tax collector. Earlier in the year, we appointed Rob Burke, and now we know he's not going to be with the county much longer, so we would like to appoint Jennifer Hobbs, and I have a letter for you guys to sign in that in that capacity.
One, you come on up.
Make a note, I want it Weaver for that position, but.
No, not as a tax collector.
We want Weaver for tax collector.
For tax collector?
Yeah, we think we should be electing that position.
He's holding his tongue right now.
Some places they are elected, in some, in the state of Florida, for example, the tax collector is a separately elected individual.
Yeah, I think they do that in P A in some areas too.
Don't they get tarred and feathered?
I would think. Who would want to run for that position, but anyway.
It's kind of like the sergeant-at-arms at the Capitol. When Congress, a congressman was drunk in at the bar, their role was to get him out of the bar and get him into their seat, you know, back in the day. The other job was to keep the Capitol warm with firewood, so, yeah, okay. March seventh, we have nothing scheduled. On Tuesday, March eighth, it starts, we have the F Y twenty-three budget overview.
It.
It. At four thirty, rising with Boys and Girls Club at Winners Mill, Commissioner Fraser is scheduled to attend. I am tentatively attending that as well, we'll see. And then I have an Ag Boy meeting on seven P M on Tuesday, March eighth. Wednesday, March ninth, I'm attending the Governor's Workforce Development Board, it's still virtual.
I have a Board of Ed that night, I think, at five.
Okay, and you have a Board of Ed that evening, you enjoy that, Thursday.
If it's worth noting, but on the ninth, we'll be, I'll be in Annapolis too.
Testifying.
Testifying in Senate chambers.
Representing Carroll County.
I'll do it well.
I'm sure you will.
We'll try.
Thursday, we have open session. I, let's see, approve submission FY twenty-three community partnership agreement and accept the award. Ms. Steckel will be presenting or, you know, in attendance. And then we have application, accept the award for Developmental Disabilities Administration, D D A, American Rescue Plan Act. We will have public comment on noise ordinance. Did you hear that, Mr. Burke?
Actually, we're going to present to you an alternative for a possible noise ordinance to see if you would be interested in pursuing it and proceeding to the public process.
Okay.
I hear you.
I'm looking forward to that. What'd you say? No, okay. And then we have C D L training at Carroll Community College and Workforce Development Board. Mr. Liburn, I think, is going to talk about the program between workforce development and Carroll Community College on C D L training.
I was going to say, I already have my C D L, so I need to go.
I'm kind of confused on what that topic is. What are we procuring?
Uh, the, um, we're, we're purchasing the services that the community college provide.
Okay, got it. Westminster Town County Agreement, Mr. Zaleski will be presenting. And then a project, and, project implementation team update. Okay, not really sure what that is.
That's the next phase of the Siegel Study, um, Ted referred to it, that, that staff's coming back to say, you know, here's, you know, here's where we stand, and it's the first of what will be a series of conversations about what you heard today.
Okay. I'm looking forward to that. And then I, some follow-up discussion from, I guess, the Siegel Study as well, is that what that is? I'm usually not this confused, I'm, I'm confused many times, but this confused, I'm kind of.
That was not there.
Okay.
So, have you done this before?
Yeah, we'll leave it at that, and then, uh, Friday, March eleventh, we got nothing, let's, let me just keep going. And then I'm looking forward to the Girl Scout Gold Award and the Free Little Pantry, which will be held at Eldersburg Library, uh, on Saturday morning, ten A M. And Commissioner Weaver will have the podcast on Sunday, March thirteenth.
Yay, Weaver, make sure you turn your clocks up on the thirteenth, so you don't miss Weaver. That would be tragic.
Wouldn't want to do that.
That would be.
So, we spring forward on March twelfth, is what you're saying. Or March thirteenth.
Yeah.
We spring forward.
We spring forward.
We spring forward.
All right.
That's how I remember, spring forward, fall back. Okay, Monday, fourteenth, we got nothing. Tuesday, March fifteenth, we got the local management board, uh, Commissioner Frazier attending, planning commission. It'll be hybrid, virtual, and in-person, Commissioner Wance will be attending. Uh, Commissioner Weaver and I will be attending Veterans Advisory Meeting at two P M. And then Battle of Books, Commissioner Boucher will be attending in Westminster.
I would think I'm attending the Westminster one, I know I said I would be, be going to the Westminster one.
What location is it, do you know?
Usually at a high school.
Okay.
But check, I, I know I said I would go to the Battle of Books, there's two of them in Westminster High School, I, I said it could be at both of them.
Okay, okay.
Just let me know the exact location, because what I did before wound up being an elementary school in Mount Aries, I didn't know where.
They usually have them each district.
I think this one is the one for adults, this isn't children's.
The one for adults is being held at sixteen twenty-three.
Well, I know, but that's March fifteenth. It, it's March fifteenth.
Well, let's check on that.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I remember seeing the, the information I got, and I said I would go to the two that were held at Westminster High School.
For anybody listening, the confusion that is occurring.
Yeah.
Let's just check on that.
Welcome there, world, they can't read.
Okay.
Okay. Until rudely interrupted by Commissioner Frazier, I'll continue with Thursday, March seventeenth. When is, uh, St. Patrick's Day? Okay, that is St. Patrick's Day, okay.
It's a date night.
You gotta come to work on that.
Well, that's right, yeah, we'll talk about that, too. Uh, there'll be a proclamation Transit Driver Appreciation Day. Um, and Stacy Nash will be participating in that. Uh, request approval to submit FY twenty-three adult court grant. And request approval to submit FY twenty-three macro conflict resolution grant application. So, Judge Hecker will be with us for a couple of events, and then approve and acceptance of FY twenty-three annual transportation plan. Maryland Municipal League that evening, uh, I know I'll be attending, and I believe Commissioner Weaver will be attending.
I will be attending, I.
Commissioner Frazier will be attending.
I know I replied to that as well.
Do I have anybody else?
Yeah, I'm probably, well, I don't know yet, St. Patrick's night, so I'm not sure yet, I, I'm listed to go, so.
Okay. Commissioner Boucher, are you attending that?
Yes, I believe I've committed to that.
Okay, so if we can check, it sounds like all of us will be attending down in Manchester, up in Manchester. Friday, we have nothing. Saturday, March nineteenth, Grayson Gardner Eagle Scout Ceremony, Commissioner Frazier will be participating at Sandy Mount, Mount Methodist Church. And then Commissioner Frazier may talk about that during his podcast the next day.
Good possibility.
What's that?
It's a good possibility.
Good possibility.
It is a good possibility, okay.
I pulled up the Battle of the Books, and they don't start until April the first.
Yeah, I think this is, I don't think it's.
All right, then, then I didn't say I was going to go to that one.
So, you pulled it up while, instead of listening to me?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just using, you know. Okay, Juan, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay, although I'm very confused about it. Mr. Burke, did I miss anything? Okay. Okay, what I need now is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Opposed.
So, go.
No, we can guess who's for him.
What's that?
What?
Four one.